Thank you. I'll just hold up for a minute. Please sign in here.
Oh, right there, sir.
I'm gonna do the chickens first. I know it's on its way from the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is gonna be a little for last.
Fine.
All of those chickens.
We're gonna give you some your correspondence.
So how you doing? How you doing? Good and busy. How you feeling?
Great.
Great. Sure. 'Cause our dog didn't break, she sold her house.
No, that's not true.
She sold her-
It's okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm just like to-
It's fine.
I don't want to lose my job. I want to go to college.
Break it. You're doing, yeah. Just the one in the sun, you guys?
Yes. Yeah, I'm just about to leave. Okay, thanks for your patience. First of all, I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardeners zoning board of appeals. Today is Tuesday, June 18th. And I'm gonna go over the ground rules by which this board operates under, and then we'll begin. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appear in a public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to this sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear on his own behalf or be represented by an agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present a case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Of others to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application will be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within one, excuse me, 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding a special permit within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote with favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision this board has provided for in Chapter 48 of the zoning act. The information is available in the office of city clerk. No variance or special permit, any extension, modifications, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The board requests that each person identify himself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, we're gonna have, we're gonna move a couple of members around because of the cases. But we're gonna start tonight. And sitting on the first case tonight, to my left is Mel Cornett, and to my far left is alternate member Dave Anteau, and myself, Ray LaFonda's chair. Mr. Haglund is now here, but he will sit on some other cases later. The first case we're gonna hear is Cody Hustlebeck, 81 Bickford Hill Road, Gardner, Mass. And it's for chickens. And I'm gonna read the zoning determination. In response to your submitted request, the above referenced property is located in a single-family residential zoning district. A special permit will be needed and approved by the zoning board of appeals prior to intaking any chickens or livestock of any kind. So, is Mr. Hustlebeck here?
Yes, sir.
Just hold up till they sign in.
Yep.
I know we have a great crowd today, and I'm sure the weather has nothing to do with it. That's why everybody's here. Okay. Mr. Hustlebeck, if you wanna begin to talk about what you wanna do?
Uh, so my name's Cody Hustlebeck, I'm at 81 Bickford Hill Road. And, um, I just wanted a chicken coop. Um, I would like chickens to help teach my kids. Help them teach them responsibilities as, uh, life is a little the same as when I was growing up. My dad was, uh, born in 1958, and, uh, he was in the military, and it was a very strict household when I was growing up. But, teach them responsibilities and, um, also reap the benefits of having eggs and, uh, growing and helping them learn, um, culture outside of just going to a grocery store.
Okay, how many chickens are you planning to have?
Um, so it's actually over time. So, as you know, chickens reproduce. Um, I'm not the first person, I'm sure, here, and probably won't be the last person. Uh, but, uh, 15 in total after years to come. So, obviously, um, chickens, each chicken will lay at different rates. Um, per se, some chickens lay almost an egg a day, and then others may lay one or two a day, I mean, one or two, two a week, excuse me. Um, all depending on the chicken. Obviously, um, they're for my consumption, so I don't wanna go overboard, so, um, and as they get older in life, uh, they slow down in production. So, as they slow down in production, um, I'll be, I'll be, um, keeping them till they're done, and then I'll be culting them in there. But realistically, like, 15 would be the total number I would have.
Do you plan on having a rooster?
One more time, sir?
Do you have a rooster involved?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay.
So how many chickens would you have in the beginning? 'Cause you said 15 over years to come. So how many would you start off with, please?
Well, Massachusetts, I have to start off with six. Um, so I would start off with six, and then, in two to three years, I would get another three. So that way, when their egg production started to slow down, um, I would build up back up.
Okay, I don't know if you've been following any of the, I'll call it, chicken activity in the city of Gardner. Uh, but generally, uh, the ones that have been approved, it's usually been four or six, and that's it.
Okay.
And nothing about, the only time you might replace one is if one dies or passes away.
Yeah.
But no going from six to 10 to 12 to 15.
Correct.
We've actually gone the other way, and some applications have had 15 or something. Uh, we have restricted how many they can have. Not that they have to take the course of somehow getting rid of the excess, we've allowed them to die off.
Right.
But they've got a set minimum.
Correct.
Or maximum, I should say.
Okay.
So, okay, I'm gonna just ask a question. Have you spoken with your neighbors or anything about your request for chickens?
Um, I just actually recently moved in on the property. Um, the Browns are here. Um, but I just letting them know that they were getting, received something in the mail that I wanted to do chickens, and, and that's really all I've honestly spoke to them about it.
Okay. I do, first I'll ask if my members have any questions. I've got a couple, I'll let them go first.
On your drawing,
Yes.
that you put in your application?
Yep.
You did not put any dimensions, so I was curious how close you were to the property line, side boundary, and how far from, I gather this is your house here?
Correct.
And how far back it is from your house?
So it's 75 feet off my house. Um, it's about 80 to my, the house, like you're standing in my backyard to the right side, and, um, all my other neighbors are hundreds of yards away. If I'm off, off my edge of my, edge of my property, it's about, um, 15, 15 feet.
So the side boundary from where you do it here to the boundary will be 15 feet?
Correct.
Now, do you have neighbors on that side?
Yes, I do.
Do you have a fence, or is there a fence?
No, actually, there's a drop-off. Um, so, you can only, uh, per se, only be able to see that with the roof area from, from their, from their property. So, um, Bickford Hill, it slopes down in the back um, of my, of my house, so it's on the drop, on the drop portion of it.
So again, for a little clarity on my part?
Yep.
Um, when you say 15 feet from your side boundary, or is that your side setback? Side of your house?
Um, so you're saying?
Well, I'm asking how far that coop, you said your coop was 15 feet from, is that the side boundary?
The side, side boundary, right.
Now, what's the distance between there and your nearest neighbor?
Uh, 80 feet.
80 feet?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, no, those were the questions I had.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hustlebeck, you know, under special permit, there's nine conditions that you have to address.
Correct.
Yeah, in your packet, you have them, and you've addressed them.
Yeah.
But we're gonna ask you to address them to the audience.
Okay.
The people that are interested, so they understand what you're planning to do.
Yes, sir.
So if you wanna begin with number one, I can always give you the thing, the item that you typed up if you wanna read from that.
Uh, I, I have it right here, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the proposal shall be suitable and located, uh, located in the neighborhood and, um, proposed in, on the entire city, and shall be um, compatible with neighbors, characters, or existing uses, and others use the permit by the right in the same district. Um, having 0.39 acres of property, the house up the, uh, on the front side of the property, we have quite a bit of rural, rural town feel. Um, one of my neighbors, um, actually works on a farm, and they have chickens. Um, they have chickens on their farm. Um, the proposal shall, number two, the proposal shall, sorry, uh, there's a reason why I'm a truck driver.
Do you wanna read from this to make it probably easier for you?
Uh, no, I just, I'm still learning my ABDs, so, um, conventional and safe, uh, vehicle pedestrian movement within the site and properties, um, in relation to adjacent streets and property, properties and improvements. Our chickens will not be free-ranging, they will stay in the run. Uh, the proposal shall provide accurate space off the street parking, loading and unloading vehicles, goods, parts, materials, and equipment indicating to the normal operations of the establishment in use. Um, eggs are for personal use. Uh, we go through about 18 to 30 eggs a week. Um, we have three kids. Um, with all the, with all the friends over, making big work just on the weekends. Um, unloading materials come from the back of my pickup truck or trailer that will be unloaded on the side of the house or parked in the driveway. The proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the prop, um, property proposal of the proposed use and disposal sewage, refuse, or other waste products and materials of drainage or surfaces, um, water. Um, using hemp bedding that does not need to be cleaned out often, and is very low dust. Um, I do give you paper informing you about hemp bedding. Um, bedding will be in a compost pile that we plan on making into a garden with it. If there is any, anything more, it'll be driven to the dump in my truck or a trailer. You're planning collecting rainwater for, um, for the use of water, um, or using a hose, um, to clean out the water. There will be no need for sewage. Um, having chickens and being able to throw those grass, the chickens will reduce the waste in the house. Number five, the proposal shall not consume, you know, reduce to the air or water pollution, erosion, flood noise, odor, dust, vibrations, noise, or visual offensive structures or site features. The chicken coop is, uh, 70 feet from the neighbor's property and 60 plus from our house. And then, and then, um, 10 feet off the property line, um, there will be no nuisance of air, um, air pollution because of the covered and closed run, and will produce all dust material for the run in the hen house. Um, material will be used, um, will be used as hemp bedding, mulch, leaves, um, from that current year. Um, there will be no water pollution due to digging rocks around the base of the coop. This will have no erosion or flooding. Um, hemp bedding is extr, um, um, extremely, uh, over and moisture absorbent. Um, number six, the proposal shall not be suitable, sustainable, um, not be, um, the proposal shall not be sustainable inconvenience or hazard to abused vehicles or pedestrians determining by the P S G A. All, all the materials of the coop will be, um, the coop will run in the back of the hen house. Uh, number seven, proposal shall be harmony and general purpose and intent of the chapter. Um, I would be in respect of anything asked of me. The proposal shall not, um, have any significance, terminal impact on city, um, city services, tax, tax base, and employment, um, opportunities, and, um, this will have no impact on the city. I understand that I am not looking for a tax break. The eggs, the eggs and the kids, understanding where food comes from is what I'm looking for in this project. Coming from a rural town, I understand the importance of everyone doing their part. I'm an outdoorsman. And the last thing I would wanna do is protect the environment more than people do today. All I want is the kids, um, to know right and wrong, um, right and wrong. Um, everything I've done for myself or Amber. Um, Amber is my girlfriend. And the proposal, council with the city, community development plan or master plan. And please see the following paperwork. I'm willing to make changes if you deem.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Will your chickens be free-ranging at any time?
No.
They'll always be in the coop?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm part of having the actual, that runs, the run space built in, in the coop, and so that way, I'm not leaving them to an area where they will be going. It's, it's all in one. So, there'll be a door that opens in the morning that will, that will let them out, and then at night, as they, they will rise, I mean, they'll, they'll go back to their, their place um, by natural, and, um, the door will shut, and that'll, that'll be it for the night.
How long is the run?
Uh, the run's 18 feet long.
And how wide?
It's eight feet.
Eight by, eight by 18?
Correct.
You stated that you were going to meet setback requirements, but in your, right up here, uh, you said the chicken, it says the chicken coop is 70 feet from the neighbor's house, but it's gonna be 10 feet off the property line.
Uh, it did, it did end up, uh, moving over because I had a whole bunch of rocks and boulders right there. Um, so we ended, I ended up, um, flattening out an area, another, another, um, five feet this way and 10 feet back from where I originally planned.
Dave Vermel, any questions at this point?
Yes, I, I was wondering, uh, where are you gonna put the compost pile that you talked about?
So that is probably gonna be all on the top of the hill, um, most of the house. Realistically, it's gonna be a bin. Um, I haven't quite got that far, 'cause I just moved in the property in May. Um, but, it's gonna be years before I even have compost. So, one of the reasons for the coop size being so big is because, so obviously, if you put a three-month-old baby, that makes me, a six-month-old baby in a three-month-old diaper, it's, the baby's just obviously gonna run through it quickly. Um, purpose of bigger is, uh, so that way, the hen can actually do its job and break down the material, per se, inside, it's gonna start inside the coop. Um, but that will all go in a bin.
Where, where is it gonna be on the property? That's what I was questioning.
Closer to that, closer to the house?
Closer to your house?
Correct.
So it'll be between where you have, uh, the coop and your house?
Yes.
It'll be in between there?
Yes.
The picture that's in your package, is that depicting your chicken coop and run?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions at this point, and I'll, I'll sit on your questions.
I'm, I'm sent at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
I'll, I'll speak on it, Mr. Chairman. Um, Tom Zupa, uh, City Gardener Building Commissioner. Um, generally speaking, when we look at zoning ordinances, City of Gardner follows, section three of chapter 48 of the general laws of the state of Massachusetts requiring five acres of land minimum or a special permit. There are some exceptions, two acres if you use it as a commercial enterprise. Uh, in general, this neighborhood is, consists of lots that are on average about a quarter of an acre to a third of an acre. Uh, they do sit, um, because the road is a hill, they do sit, um, downwind of each other, so they kinda stack as they go up the, up the street. Uh, a structure like this would be considered an accessory building or an accessory structure. Zoning allows it to be within five feet of the side or rear property lines. Um, in general, neighborhoods like this are not conducive to the keeping of, of chickens. They're too small, they're too densely populated, they're, they're too congested. Um, I know the assistant health director had reached out with, with some concerns as well. I can't speak for the health department, so I'd have to defer to, to, to their judgment on, on their, their concerns. Um, in general, not really conducive to densely populated, um, close-knit structures here.
That it?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Any other city officials to speak regarding this application? Any other city officials to speak regarding this application? Any of others to the properties present to speak in favor of this application? Any of others to the property present to speak in favor of? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Sir?
Yeah? Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone.
You think, please state your name and address for the record.
I, you know, ran out of the house without mirrors.
State your name.
Charles Kenneth Brownlee.
And address.
85 Bickford Hill Road.
Go ahead, thank you.
Gardner, Mass.
Sybil Brownlee, 85 Bickford Hill.
You can help him if you want.
Without, I'd be-
Go ahead.
Well, it's, what am I?
I'm a little doctorist.
Yeah, you please.
Um, first of all, the chicken coop is already up and it's on the property line. It's on the property line, on our property line and his property line. Um, and I have an issue with that. Chickens are not quite, I grew up next to neighbors who had chickens. Um, and I just have a problem with it being right on the property line. It's actually attached to the hill. His yard is a little bit lower than ours where he's put the chicken coop, but we can see the top of it is a two-story coop. Um, and, uh, unless things are gonna be really kept clean, chickens are not the cleanest birds in the world. And, um, I think, if he wanted to have chickens, the coop should not be on the property line. It should be somewhere in the middle of his, um, property if he's gonna have it. The other thing is that all of our bedrooms sit on that side of the house. So I, I have an issue with where it's placed.
Any more comments?
My preference would be that there are no chickens, but I, I don't wanna be the villain here, but I, I think if you're going to do that, then there should be some respect to the neighbors and not put things right on the neighbor's, uh, property line.
Okay. I'm just gonna ask you, and I was just on the back, if you state your name and address.
Sybil Brownlee, 85 Bickford Hill Road.
Hey, thank you. That conclude your, your comments in opposition to the coop?
Yes, unless you have something else to say.
Yes, this is a delicate situation. Um, it's frustrating. It's frustrating.
Okay.
It's frustrating. We're probably gonna have, we're, are, in a transition ourselves. We're transitioning away from Bickford Hill Road back to our home in California. And what I was thinking, the one, one reason why that it's so close, I, I would want the people who, I'd want to have the widest audience of people who come to our home, potentially buyers. I would want them to know that, I, I'd want to be able to, to have many people who would come and would not be offended by what's out there already. When I say offended, I, I would want to, I, I wanted the widest audience I could get to see our property and to look out at the property and say, "Oh, this is a nice piece of property, like this. Like the hill, levels off and so forth, a lot of history there and so forth." I think it was the second house, but on the hill, is it the first house, second house? Jane Haywood, you know, right next door. And it was just, it's just, I don't wanna offend anybody, and, uh, when I said, um, going to zoning board of appeals, I thought that we were coming here to talk about that.
We are.
Well, it, it's, it's, it's a difficult decision. Ours is financial in one sense. As I said, I, maybe I'm repeating myself, but it's, it's awkward, it's awkward. Mr. Hustlebeck is a very nice man.
Yes, he is.
Very nice man. His family, very nice. Never, uh, quiet. It's just awkward. And I, I don't know if there's anything I can add to that, it's just, it's, it's unpleasant and necess, but necessary. just, it's an unpleasant, but necessary objection, but not really an objection, again, I guess, now I'm repeating again, so anyway. I guess the bottom line is finance for us, finance. Just have a wider audience, view the property and go from there.
Okay, well, I can assure you, no decision has been made on these chickens yet, so right now, currently under deordnance, he needs a special permit, and that's what he's here for tonight, to present his case, but no decision of nay or nay has been made. So that's why this is an open hearing, so people can voice their opinion for or against, and then the board will take the information provided, visit the property if we need to, and then assess what we have, and then make a decision from there. And I didn't speak, well, I mentioned about appeals. Either way, if we approve his request, people in opposition have the right to appeal it within a certain time period, twenty days after. If we don't approve it, then Mr. Hustleby has an appropriate time to appeal our decision, so both sides get, I'll say, another swing of the bat at it, you know, depending how it goes.
I wish that was a better metaphor. Better.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Be careful going back. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this application?
We need Mel.
You can sit there. Mr., Mr. Agnelli?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alan Agnelli, I'm a resident at fifty-five Bickford Hill Road, and a resident there in the seventeenth year today. I just want to address four elements, if I could. First has been addressed already, is proximity of neighboring residences. As was mentioned, the house lots immediately abutting the applicant's lot average, four tenths of an acre to a half an acre, with frontage averaging one hundred feet. The applicant's parcel is familiar, consisting of sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square feet or point three nine acres. The sighting of a chicken coop or pen on the property could come within forty feet of the immediate abutters' property boundaries, potentially affecting the peace and comfort of the neighbors. Secondly, public nuisance complaints. Hens, roosters, he mentioned to be no roosters. Roosters and hens express themselves by making a variety of sounds, depending on their level of comfort, excitement, fear, or based on what type of activity they are engaged in. For instance, hens are known to cluck for extended periods after laying eggs. This regular crowing, clucking, and squawking could lead to conflict between neighbors. Odor management may also pose a significant problem for urban chicken keepers, often leading to complaints and conflict. Three, exposure to wildlife and predators. The Bickford Hill Parker Hill neighborhood borders Dunst State Park, is approximately four miles from the Lake Wampanoag Wildlife Sanctuary, which is home to a variety of wildlife such as bears, foxes, coyotes, raccoons, skunks, birds of prey, mice and rats in the neighborhood, as well as domesticated cats and dogs. Many of these animals prey on chickens, particularly if they are not kept in predator-proof structures. The presence of chickens alone may not necessarily attract animals, but the sounds they make, their diet, and the waste they produce do. The presence of undesired animals in and around backyard coops can cause serious conflict. For example, predators attracted by chickens may also kill, injure, or stress out companion animals like cats and dogs that are let outside. Human-wildlife conflict may also occur while attempting to shoo predators away, possibly leading to avoidable injury to the human or the wild animal. Precedent setting, concerns about establishing precedent by issuing a special permit for this use are real. As such, approval could lead to additional applications for raising chickens and/or for other agricultural uses in dense residential settings. In conclusion, recommendation, for these reasons, I ask that the special permit not be granted. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present you, excuse me, duplicate copies as required on the Public Records Law, Open Meeting Law of the materials that I spoke about.
Thank you, Mr. Agnelli.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. I just, I'll ask, is there any interested parties who would like to speak for or against this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak either for or against this application? Be ignored, none. And any questions from Dave or Mel?
No, not at this time, but I would like to visit the property.
I, I just wanted one clarification. Is the coop already up on the, on the boundary line, like what was mentioned?
It, it's not on the boundary line, it is up, because if it's, if this all, if, I'm not able to do it, I'm gonna turn it into a shed. If you, if you look at the buildings, structure of the building, the purpose for it, also if, I eventually gonna need more storage on my house, so if I wasn't able to do this, I'd like to do something else.
Okay, so it's up and it's on, it's on the property line, it's not the distance from the property line?
It's at the, at the distance of the property line that I, that I posted, correct.
So it's, you're saying it's fifteen feet from the property line?
Yes.
I think, I think too, Mr. Zupa mentioned that it's considered as an accessory building, and the dimensions of that are five feet from the property line. Not fifteen, it'd be five feet. That's where it has to be.
Up.
As close as you can get to the property line, it's five feet.
So it has to be on the five-foot mark?
It gotta be off the property line by five feet.
Or more.
Or more, okay, that's, that's the way I wrote it, and that's...
Okay. I do have a document that was submitted to the board, it's from the Board of Health.
Yep.
It's from the Office of the Board of Health, ninety-five Pleasant Street, Room One, Room Twenty-nine, Gardener, Mass. Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and four, to whom it may concern. I was asked to provide a summary of any health related, Health Department related concerns regarding the subject of backyard chickens. There are many different topics related to the keeping of domestic poultry, which have public health implications including the following, excuse me, an increased risk of several diseases that live, that live poultry can carry and transmit to people. I have included a list of the diseases of public health concern at the end of this letter. An increase in odor, noise, nuisance complaints. This interrupts the peaceful enjoyment of a neighbor's use of their own property. An increase in pests such as insects, house mice, rats, which carry many diseases and cause building damage with nesting and chewing habits. Potential for attraction of larger pests or predators such as foxes, raccoons, skunks, and coyotes to populated areas, many of which carry rabies. Management, storage, and disposal, disposal of manure, dirty bedding materials, and deceased animals. The risk of viral, viral contaminants being introduced through the stormwater runoff. The City of Gardener is more densely populated than our neighboring towns, in thickly settled areas of our city. There may not be sufficient separation between yards or coops to prevent the spread of disease between neighboring flocks of domestic chickens. A plan for managing or quarantining any chickens sick with a disease of public health concern would need to be developed. When an owner is found negligent, do we have a facility to house and care for the chickens if they need to be removed from an owner's care? That's questioned. In addition, the city should, would need to provide additional oversight by the inspectors of animals, our animal control officers, as the health inspectors are only able to access the sanitary conditions of the property and are not qualified to access the condition of any domestic animals. Inspectors of animals are responsible for barn inspections and assist with any domestic animal disease quarantine. Live poultry can carry harmful diseases that may people sick. Symptoms can range from minor skin infections to serious illnesses that could cause death. Children younger than five years old, adults sixty-five or older, and people with weakened immune systems are more likely to get severe illness. People can get infected through contact with saliva, naval secretions, and feces from infected poultry. People can also get infected through contact with virus-contaminated surfaces, poultry coops, compost runoff, and supplies. These diseases can spread from infected food handler to the general public unless stronger, proper hand hygiene is used by the infected foodwork. As an inspector of food establishments in the city, I would like to ask the ZBA to consider a minimum setback for any person seeking a permit for chickens if they are located near a licensed food establishment, public park, school, or daycare to reduce the chance of spread of disease. I feel it is important for the zoning board to consider the impact of the community as a whole during the decision-making process, as many of these concerns would carry additional inspectional and enforcement responsibilities for the Health Department, Building Commissioner, and the Animal Control Officers. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or would like to discuss any of these concerns. Sincerely, Angela M. De Prima, Assistant Director of Public Health, City of Gardener. And the, excuse me, and the diseases that she highlighted in the beginning are avian flu, E. coli, histoplasmosis, salmonella, and Corypibacter. Those are the ones, that was, excuse me, submitted by the Board of Health.
Correct.
Okay. I would tend to agree with Mr. Cornet, because we have some concerns of where it's located.
Yep.
Where it may be located, and since it is already up, then we can see where it is. If you were going to change the location before our viewing, I would ask that you mark off the location of, if you have one or two, if you have the run and the coop are separate, mark off the four corners.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be fancy, it can be four rocks, and take some orange spray paint.
Yes, sir.
Hit the four corners.
Yep.
So we know exactly where you're planning to put it.
Yes, no problem.
And we can look at the distances from your house, abutters, and the property line.
Okay.
Now, if there's no fencing between your property lines, maybe you could do a couple spray dabs so we can look and say, here's the property line where it runs.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Otherwise, we would need to see a copy of your site plan and tape survey so we'd know.
Okay.
Okay. The members have any other questions or comments?
No.
No. I'm gonna ask that lady in the back, 'cause you put your hand up. You're all set? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this application?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah, I see.
Even being an accessory building or accessory structure, it needs to comply with zoning setbacks. The only way for that to be done will be verified by my office is to have a certified plot plan drafted up by a land surveyor. Mortgage plans are not sufficient for that. Mortgage plans don't have your structure on them, they don't have the setbacks of your structure on them.
Okay.
So you'd have to engage the services of a land surveyor.
Good.
You newly, you just recently purchased that property?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you'll have a site plan that was drawn up by probably a surveyor for the bank or whatever.
Okay.
And that's the document you would be looking for?
All right, generally speaking, they would be provided with a mortgage site plan.
That's right.
So the mortgage site plan is not sufficient, it's not a certified plot plan. The difference between a mortgage site plan, and it specifically listed on it, is the mortgage site plan doesn't give specific setbacks from property lines, from adjacent buildings as well, where a certified plot plan does. So that's the difference.
Yeah, that's more of a tape survey. Okay, if no one else wants to speak, we'd like to schedule a time to view your property.
Absolutely.
So I'm gonna say, are you gonna need time to get the certified plan that he's looking for?
Not at the moment, sir. I just, I, I will be able to get it. However, there, I did, I did actually look at that because eventually, I have talked to you, but I would like to do some more to my building, on my property per se, so I would, I would need to be able to do that.
Okay, what's a good timeline for you?
Preferably, where I'm not working, which is always, so whatever you guys tell me, that I'll, I'll make it happen.
Well, I mean, normally you try to do it within a week or two, but there's not, not be the right length of time you would need.
That's fine, I get it.
But if you remember, this is a special permit.
Correct.
So we have ninety days to hold the meeting, we're holding the meeting today.
Yep.
We have sixty-five days to render a decision after we close the public hearing.
Correct.
So if I do not close that public hearing tonight.
Okay.
And extend it to view your property, et cetera, there's no door that shuts a window, it just keeps going till we make the comment meeting closed.
Okay.
So I mean, you need a week, two weeks, three weeks?
To do the, the site survey?
Well, so we, we're gonna come out and look.
Right.
And it'd be proven if you could either provide that cert, certified survey to Mr. Zupa, or give it to us when we're there and we'll provide a copy of it to Mr. Zupa.
Okay.
And if he has questions, he'll contact you.
That would be one of those things I would have to work out with them, but I do know they're about, I, the price ranges I've got is between three and five grand for them, for those site surveys, so it's a, a big, like to chew as a new homeowner. You can, on my, on my property line, on the property lines of the house, because all of them are kinda stacked, you can virtually see where the lines should be about, giving that fifteen feet, I thought was a buffer, but if that's not adequate, I have, I have no problem moving it into the center of my property, if, if, if that's the problem per case.
Well, I think I give you an option is, if, you know, the, the distance from property lines et cetera, it's not clear, you have the right to talk with Mr. Zupa, he'll give you the actual dimensions. We can still visit, set a site visit.
Yep.
And we, we can go visit, look at it wherever it's marked. Mr. Zupa will feed the info to me as what your site plan shows.
Okay.
And we'll work from there. So I guess, I'm asking, you need a couple weeks? The thing with concerns, we're gonna watch you coming into July, it's a vacation time for a lot of people.
Correct.
You know, we're trying to meet what people's needs are, and so if you need to hire some professionals, they may be there, they may not be, be there, so...
Right. I, I can do, I can do the site survey on Saturday, but for the actual plot plan, I mean, for the, the tape, I guess, that's something, I'm not sure because of running into vacations and stuff like that. I, I would have to reach out to that company and per se call them, because I got, I got a price about a month and a half ago, back two months ago, before I even bought the property, so I'm not sure where their time schedule is at now. That's why I'm unable to give you an actual answer on that.
I'm sort of gonna throw a timeline out. I'm trying to keep it corralled in two or three weeks.
Yep.
Is that adequate?
Yes.
I don't know what your schedules are at this point. I know next week is up for me.
Yeah, I'm...
I'm gonna try to do it in two weeks, from this Saturday.
Set the seven?
Or sometimes do it in two weeks from that Saturday.
Set the seven? Can we hold during the week?
Can we go during the week?
Is, is it, do you decide, okay, during the week, or is the weekend the best?
No, we could do it during the week. Unfortunately, I, I do work quite a bit. But if we could do it at an evening time?
Yeah, we would make it towards, you know, five, six, seven o'clock.
That would work.
Next week?
Not next week, right, can't go now.
I can't do next week.
So July, the week of July first?
Yes.
How about the, do the fourth?
Yeah, right.
How about the second?
The second?
July 2nd.
July 2?
What day of the week is it?
It's Tuesday.
July 2?
Okay.
And what time is good? Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock will work best for me.
Right, so we will be there July 2 at six o'clock.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
You can be there. Your girlfriend Amber can be there. And we'll view the property at first. And if you can mark off as best you can.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Right, about the neighbors viewing. Should we comment about the neighbors viewing and going on the property?
The neighbors can come over at any time and knock on the door. I would rather them just knock on the door. I just don't, I have a boxer, so I just would rather them not play together. So she, she doesn't know everybody, so, she's skittish, so.
So you have no problem if the neighbor comes?
I don't have any problems, I...
Okay.
I'll just state too, for the record, if any neighbors do come over, we do not carry the meeting on. We're there to view it, ask a couple of questions, and there'll be no further discussions because it's part of an open meeting and then we'll pick it up the next time we come and meet.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, well, this portion is concluded. So you're all set if you want to go or you want to stay?
Okay.
And we're gonna move to the next case.
All right, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did I say that right?
Talka.
Talka? Yeah.
Okay.
You can be here in a minute, I recommend.
The next case before the board? Okay. Since Mr. Ante is here for two cases, he just did one. I'm gonna go to... Talka Avenue. Mr. Lusko, are you presenting anything for Talka tonight or is somebody else? Okay. Just, just let me get your file, okay? Okay, and just for clarification, sitting on Mr. Foster's case for Talka Avenue will be Mr. Ante, Mr. Cornet, and myself.
No, it's Randy. Randy.
Oh, you're on Talka?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Randy Haglund. No, myself.
Babe.
Do you have footage of fire to have this case before?
I can keep some information.
I think so. Good for you.
What are you looking for in that?
Picture of him.
Big for you, it's right here. Okay, Mr. Foster. If you'd like to come up?
Sitting too long, see? All right, sorry. Yes, how are you?
Okay, if you want to present, but first, I'm gonna qualify it. At the last meeting, I said I was gonna contact the building commissioner regarding the grandfathering of the lot.
Correct.
And he did get back to me, but this week, so I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to speak first, and then I will read the information that he provided us.
Okay.
Okay, so is there anything new? Because this is really for a finding. It's not for a special permit. It's not for a variance.
Yes.
It's just a finding of the board to either agree with the building commissioner or disagree, and then you'll plot your course of action from there. Whether you wanna go forward, drop it, whatever, your decision.
So I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, because I know in the past we've had some confusion of exactly what it is that we need to determine here to give this as a building of a lot. And really, I think what we need to do is just determine that it is in fact a grandfathered lot. Some of the research I've done since then does reference the state laws brought into that. I can pull it up. You may have it. I'm sure Mr. Zupa is familiar with it. It is for the protection of, it's basically under the section of lot protection under the Massachusetts general bylaws. Separate lots, Chapter forty-eight, Section six. Any increased area frontage with yard depth requirements of the zoning ordinance by law shall not apply for a single use or two-family residential, which by the time of the recording of the endorsement, which was when zoning was put in place, endorsement, whichever occurs sooner is not held in common ownership of the adjoining land, which we've shown that is not. Existing requirements of less than the proposed requirements, but at least five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage, are protected for single family and dual family, two-family, so two-family or less, one-family or two-family, not multiple families, are protected from changes in zoning as we determined. And that includes residential zoning. So in other words, if you change something from commercial, if something was established as residential and you now decide that's gonna be a commercial area, as long as the intent is to build a single-family or two-family house, it is exempt from that change as long as it's owned separately. Purpose of this law is to protect once valid, this is from the state side I'm reading in the determination from the law. This is Sturgis versus Chilmark. The purpose of this was to protect a once valid lot from becoming rendered unbuildable for certain residential purposes, assuming lots meets the modest frontage requirements. Sturgis versus Chilmark, thirty Mass. forty-six, established in nineteen eighty. Questions asked to determine separate lot protection. Does this lot have at least five thousand square feet? Yes, it does. Is it fifty feet of frontage? Yes, it does. Is the lot located in an area where other single-family or two-families are in use? Yes, it does. Does the lot conform to existing zoning when legally created? Yes, it did. Was the lot separately described and separately held from any adjoining land at the time more than the restrictive zoning requirements took effect? Yes, it was. It goes back to nineteen twenties. The separate lot protection extends increase in lot frontage area. The separate lot protection extends to increases in lot area frontage with depth, yard requirements for single and two-family use. SIEBER versus zoning burden appeals, Wellfleet, Mass. Yeah, that's basically what we got, and that's additional laws and research that we've done since then, pulled up. So really, I believe this to be a grandfathered lot, which allows for light buildings to be purchased and, light buildings to be built on property as long as those requirements are met, which we've demonstrated that they are. So I think this is a grandfathered lot and really I just made that determination from board.
Okay, well, Mr. Foster, you've done some great research.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm gonna read the memorandum I received from John Flick, who's the city solicitor.
Yep.
In response to my question regarding the grandfathering of that lot. And actually, part of the question originally was grandfathering of that lot and would a single-family home also be grandfathered? But he split that up. And he answered pretty much about the grandfathering of the lot. And then he talked about if a home was to be constructed. So I'm gonna read it to you. As, and says to Ray, as we discussed, zero Talka may be protected as a non-conforming lot pursuant to the Mass. general laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six. However, in order to determine the status applies, the applicant will need to provide the ZBA with a legal title opinion.
Yeah, that's what that, that's what that is.
Yep.
Because I figured that may be something that came up.
If the opinion concludes that the parcel was never held in common ownership within a budding lot since the time of recording of the original plan, then the statute applies. If it has been held in common ownership, then the lot is non-conforming and subject to current zoning law. So the deciding document is gonna be the legal title opinion. Then he went on further. If the law is protected, then the setback requirement's ineffective at the time that zoning was passed, applied to the lot. And zoning passed, perhaps based nineteen seventy. And dimensions were set up at that time. Nevertheless, if the lot is protected for use, a variance will be needed since the land is not zoned industrial too. In addition, the applicant may need to seek a variance for the dimensional requirements. And says, I will send those over when I get them. So I mean, I do have some dimensional requirements. There's a question on the accuracy of this dimension, so that's under study right now.
Yeah, like I said, when I, when I, when I read this, like I said, it specifically states that it does not, you cannot restrict it because of that. And it's been established. Like I said, it was the zoning board of appeals versus Wellfleet, and it went all the way to the state case. I can pull up. The separate lot protection extends to increases in lot area, frontage, width, depth, and yard requirements in single and two-family uses. And that is SIEBER versus zoning burden appeals of Wellfleet, sixteen Mass. Application Court, nine eight five. That was established in nineteen eighty-three.
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm reading here is if the lot is held in common ownership.
Yeah, right, that would be different.
That's different.
And I, and I do believe that you should have in your packets, if not, I have additional copies, proving it's got the different deeds over the years, showing that it has never been owned by adjoining lots going back.
In your packet, would you submit a legal title opinion?
A legal title opinion, no. I can, something if you want, I can certainly send over. But like I said, that is, that is right from the state. That is right from the state, Massachusetts Board of Appeals.
So I mean, what we're gonna need though is that legal title opinion, because that's gonna clarify the lots. Whether, recall, let's say we got four lots.
Yeah.
If one, two, and three, and two is the one we're talking about, and one, two, and three were owned by the same person or family?
Right.
Then that's a problem.
What I've got is copies of all of the deeds going back to nineteen twenty-six. And that should be included in the packet that you guys currently have.
It was, it was. Did the Lusko family own, never owned any of the budding properties, do you know?
No.
It was always just these two, yeah, just these two.
Well, if you have the certified legal plan, you said you can get it in a couple of days?
Yeah, I mean, I could, it's on my phone in the state of Massachusetts. If I had a way of printing it out, I can hand it to you right now.
Okay. If you do,
Yeah.
I'm gonna recommend that you submit it to Mr. Zupa, the building commissioner. That will answer what Attorney Flick said here. Now, after that, depending what you wanna build and how you wanna build it, then you've got to give him the plot plan of what you're planning, how big, dimensions.
What, that should also be in the packet as, that I believe is also in your packet as well.
And then he will make the decision.
Yeah.
If it's, it's the goal.
Okay.
Because if once you submit that legal plan and he confers to me and says, yes, it is, and nobody owns, you know, our, our decision will be in the finding that we confer, we concur that it is a grandfathered lot. Now, the action we take after that, depending on the size of the house, rear,
Yeah.
location, then he's gonna have to make the determination.
Yeah.
Does it need these zoning dimensions at that time or back when zoning was adopted?
Prior to the nineteen, I think when you guys put them in, I actually, I actually thought it was in the late seventies, close to nineteen eighty, before they were actually formally adopted. It could be off a couple of years. But back in, certainly when this lot was created and sold in common ownership, there was no zoning requirements, as far as setbacks or anything like that. So it's very clearly stated on the state thing, under a protected lot, that encumbrances don't matter, that those, anything added after that can't limit the size of the house. In theory, if I wanted to, and I don't, I could put this right up to one foot off the boundaries on both sides and up to the road. Clearly, as you can see from the plan, that's not my intent. But to the true leather of what the state says, that would be allowable.
Yeah, and that's why Mr. Zupa has to make the determination.
Yeah.
But I think the critical document is that certified title. And once he gets it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. What was that?
And I said the critical document will be that certified legal title opinion. He will make that decision at that point. And that means, as I said, if it is and it was not held in common ownership, it's a grandfathered lot.
Yeah.
No question there.
Right.
Once you submit your information as to what you wanna build, where you wanna build, et cetera.
Yeah.
Now, he has to make that decision.
Right, he's, yeah.
Now, let's just add one more layer to this. If you have setback violations, if he says, according to the dimensional chart at the time,
Yeah.
you're gonna be two feet too close.
Correct.
Then you need to file, if you wish, a file for a variance, for a dimensional setback. And I think we talked about that a few weeks ago.
You did. It is my belief, reading this, that once we determine that it is a grandfathered lot under that statute, that, that would no longer be an issue at play because it wouldn't necessarily require to need the setbacks that it does now.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'd like to be respectful of everybody there. Need to set something up to make sure we're not crossing it, won't. I've verified myself in three years of experience of working in closer quarters than this, I can absolutely get through and work on the off without crossing over to anyone's property or further down, so.
Yeah, I think, as I said, we're not sure of the validity of this document.
I'm sorry, which, I'm sorry, which one's that?
See, this is the document that was submitted to the board for setbacks, for side setbacks, rear front, et cetera.
Current, currently, current setbacks?
And supposedly, these were in effect back then, and they really haven't changed. So that's the decision he's asking to make when he looks at it.
I'm sorry, was that back in nineteen, the nineteen seventies?
Randy, what year?
That was, the request was, what I saw, and that was a response was, what were the setback requirements in nineteen, in nineteen seventy, adoption of the zoning act? And this was the chart that the building commissioner provided to the city's attorney.
In nineteen seventy, correct.
That stating that were, those were the setbacks in nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
I know that's not from nineteen seventy. I, I know it isn't.
Right, because what I guess my argument would be is that the lot was created back in like nineteen twenties, that anything from nineteen seventy, sixty.
It all goes to when zoning was accepted.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're pretty much on board that we know it's a, it's a grandfathered lot. The issue becomes, what were the setback requirements in effect when zoning was accepted? Mr. Haglund is not sure if this is correct.
I understand, I understand.
And so we need Mr. Zupa to do a little more research and get that done. But I think that the critical document is get that legal opinion to him. And that will course, the chart will course. But you do have options, because if he says, well, you don't need your setback requirements, you then have the option to file for a variance if you wish. One of the other options, and I would not recommend it because of time, you could request that they change the zoning from industrial to residential. But you're looking minimum of a year before that happens.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So the best rule would be file for variance, if that's what you wanna do. Okay?
So just to be clear to the candidate, he would require a variance for the use variance for building a house in industrial law, industrial zone?
Yep.
And then if the determination is... And then if the determination is made, then you can't meet setback requirements, a separate variance for setback requirements.
I think what I'm, I think what I'm going for, and the way I read the determination is through the different court cases that have made it away through Massachusetts Housing Authority. That handles land use, protects things like that, not housing authority, but the land use. I believe the way I, I read that is if, once this is determined by Mr. Zupa to be a grandfathered lot, as I think we're all in agreement of, that as long as we, as long as no setbacks or other things required, I don't believe the board actually would have originally needed to make a hearing on this, if we had determined that, if Mr. Zupa had been not aware of this, the legal qualifications, the legal precedent of this. I don't think it would have come to the board for, I don't think it would require a special permit or, or a variance.
Might be a use variance. I think what Mr. Haglund just brought up, and that's what Mr. Zupa has to make the determination. Because you want to build a residential structure.
Correct.
You are currently in an industrial two zone.
Right.
Not allowed.
Right, yeah.
So the option is for, I kept saying variance, but it's actually a use variance, to allow residential structure to be constructed in a industrial two zone. The way around it, as I said, the other option is change the zoning, which will take a minimum of a year. And that's not the right.
Right. I, I, I guess what I'm saying, and I, again, I will go back to it, is that if it's, was created prior to the zoning change, in other words, that was not zoned industrial two, practically, when this was created as a single residential family house, and it's grandfathered, it's actually protected from change in zoning going for, it's, you can't go back in time and change what it was originally created for. And back when it was created, it was residential, as you can see from the other houses around it. And the intent of it.
Did the
And then the Massachusetts does not allow for it to be more restrictive. In other words, you can't go back and change it. For example, if I wanted to go back and put, say, adult entertainment complex, that would be something that would be a special permit with. But single family and two-family homes are protected from that changing. So even if you put it industrial two, it doesn't need to go for a special permit to become out of that, to change that. The way, the way I, I believe, read the law, it's pretty, pretty clearly stated.
Well, I think you're given the opening, your interpretation of what that law says. We would need more than just your interpretation.
This second paragraph of the city solicitor's opinion that the chairman read, now, I'll read it again, it says, if the lot is protected, which is grandfathered, then the setback requirements in effect at the time zoning was passed, applied to a lot, that's the chart there.
Yeah.
The chairman was referring to. Nevertheless, if the lot is protected, a use, so if the lot is protected, a use variance will be needed since the land is not zoned industrial two. In addition, the applicant may need to seek a variance for dimensional requirements. So that's, and he said he was gonna send some information over to the building commissioner. I don't know if he did or not, but that's where I was going, that it's, it's not only a, 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 potentially a dimensional variance. I mean, that's this gentleman's determination to make, but potentially a use variance as well for, for building a house in an industrial zone.
Yeah, and I, and I think you and I talked about that about three or four weeks ago.
Yeah, correct.
That that might be the possibility.
Yeah.
So I think everything hinges on Mr. Zupa's finally determination. Once you get that legal document, then we go from there.
So you'd like to see, you'd like to see a cop out, you'd like me to see it printed out from the state website? Is that, that's, this isn't research I've done, this is right on the state of Massachusetts website.
I think one of the things the chairman has asked, and was recommended by the attorney, was some history of a lot, I know you provided the deeds that go back to nineteen twenty-six to current, which is great. In the deed, they also made a reference to a bunch of how, how the title was obtained through probate court. I think that information combined with the deeds will probably be perhaps enough. He wa, he wants a full title opinion.
Yes, he does.
The city attorney is, you know, requesting a full title opinion.
I'm sorry.
Which, which you basically have provided by saying, you know, you showed the, the roadmap from nineteen twenty-six or whatever it was
Right.
to currently with the, the transfer of the deeds. I mean, it says right here, you know, conveying the same premises dated nineteen, nineteen twenty-six. So you showed, you showed the point A to point B, and the deeds that is provided.
So I mean, if that, if that's acceptable, if that's a ti, your legal title deed?
I mean, it's not a legal title opinion, usually that's, you know, done by a title attorney.
Yeah.
And it's, it's up to, but I mean, the information is there, it should be
Yeah, it should be fairly easy to do it.
To pull it together, I would think.
So you'd have to look for an attorney to give you a, a title opinion. And that would be the legal title opinion. Then you would work with Mr. Zupa from that point forward.
Just the state recorded deeds, I mean, they are recorded on the state, the registry of deeds. That, that, following that chain of the deeds throughout is not clear enough. You would need, maybe hire a legal counsel to show those deeds. Those are all, those are all legally recorded documents, that's why I guess I was.
Well, do you have the actual court document, or?
Well, they're, when they're filed to the registry of deeds, I mean, they're official legal documents at that point in time.
Yeah, his, the most recent deed, which is, you know,
When he bought it?
When when Mr. Stanley Lusco inherited from the estate. This was all done through probate, through Henry Sands' office.
Yeah.
It makes reference to the nineteen twenty, being the same premises nineteen twenty-six.
Yeah, but who knows attached to any other premises?
We don't, other than Mr. Lusco saying it.
I believe that I also, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that there was some research done into some of the other deeds. Are some of the other deeds there as well? I'll look at my paper real quick.
No, just the, the most recent deed where it got transferred to Stanley Lusco.
Did I not provide also some of the deeds to the adjacent properties?
No, I think, oh, yes, she did in the back. In lots numbered four and five, he's, he's provided issue right here.
Okay, then I think that should be submitted to Mr. Zupa to see if that concurs as, I'll call it individual ownership, not common ownership.
Yeah, because this deed is specifically lots four and five.
Yeah.
And what lot number is the one?
Four and five.
Four and five?
Yep.
So he's got two lots.
Two, they're two small lots that are together.
When they were actually created, I don't know, do you have a copy of the original, like what originally it shows? If you, do you have the packet in front of you that shows it? And when it talks about the two lots, they're two twenty-five foot lots.
And I can't have the solicitor look at this again, because he's away for a week. But Attorney Pusateris, is he here? Not tonight, but.
Yeah, I, I believe he's
I think we may need to have him take a quick look at this based on that. And that's, we have an assistant city solicitor. And I guess the board would like to submit this to him to clarify that those will
That the deeds is sufficient and satisfied.
Is sufficient to what our city solicitor has asked. And I will get that submitted, hopefully tomorrow. I don't know when he'll respond.
No, I understand.
We'll get it in his hands. Okay? So then, if you want, I would like to continue your case and not the next one. I would like to continue it, and hopefully, and I'm gonna tell it to the assistant, assistant city solicitor for two weeks. They need a response back within two weeks.
All right, I appreciate it.
So, because we want to move you forward. If everything adds up, you and Mr. Zupa will have conversations of your, your building plans, what it is, but it looks like you're going to need a use variance if everything concurs.
Yeah. My understanding, like I said, and I don't know if you can speak to this, is the way I read lot protection under Massachusetts from the state, state website, under chapter forty, A, section six, that for the purpose of a single or two-family house, it exempts you from zoning, in other words, it doesn't go back retrospect. So if the zoning was created, it meant industrial two back in the nineteen seventies, nineteen, late to nineteen seventies, early nineteen eighties. If at the time it was able to be built a single-family residential house or two-family residential house, that I would be exempt from the change in going to industrial two.
Yeah, but the issue before the thing, too, it's an industrial two zone.
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, so when we go through some of the case law for lots held in single ownership, what it speaks to, so obviously you're industrial two, so you, and we'll look at this a little closer. You may need a use variance, however, you may also need a variance from the setback requirements. So when we go through specific case law, and we go through, you know, some of, you know, Barbowski's old lots, so you would have to comply with the setback requirements at the time zoning was created within, within the city. Those setback requirements match what's present today. So you may still need a use variance, and I know this is just a finding, so you may need a use variance. If you do need a use variance, you'll also need a separate variance for setbacks. Potential separate variance, because you may be able to build a structure on the property and meet the current setbacks. And the setbacks that were, you know, in place in nineteen seventy.
Am I, am I mistaken, because I, I was not able to find in my research zoning in the city of Gardner back in nineteen twenty-six when this was created?
Nineteen seventy.
Right, but if it was residential in nineteen twenty-six, I don't see where there were any setbacks in that. So in other words, like I said, I, as I, as I read, you know, before, any increased area, frontage, depth, width, yard, depth requirements? In other words, anything to do with setbacks shall not apply to a lot for single and two-family residential use which at the time of recording or endorsement, whatever occurs sooner, was not held in common ownership, which I've tried to prove, with the adjoining land confronting then existing requirements. So as long as it existed then, met the requirements then, which there were none back in nineteen twenty-six, which the adjoining land confirmed existing requirements at less than the proposed requirements, less than five thousand square feet and fifty square feet of frontage. The purpose of this, this is from Massachusetts website. Purposes protected once found lot from becoming rendered unbuiltable for certain residential purposes, assuming the lot meets the modest area, frontage requirements and sturdiness. Again, lot confirmed the existing zoning when legally created, it did. Was the lot separately described and separately held from adjoining land at the time more restrictive zoning took effect? It was. Was the separate lot protected and extended increase from lot search, frontage width, depth, yard requirements for a single and two-family use? That's Tripper versus zoning board of appeals of Wellfleet that I mentioned before. And if that's the case, then I am protected from any changes that were created. So any zoning that would come out after that, according to the state of Massachusetts website, I would be exempt from. So I don't, I guess I'm confused as to why I would need a, a variance if it, if I read this from the state website under, you know, the legal hearings and stuff like that, that establish this at the state level.
I mean, all I can really say is I'm not an attorney, neither are any of my members here.
No, no, and I, and I do understand and respect that, certainly.
So I think we would need, and you may be a hundred percent correct, and I would like to get a legal opinion from
Yeah.
either our assistant or
Yeah.
city solicitor to say,
Yeah.
yes, Mr. Foster's a hundred percent correct. Or no, and here's why. And then we can move forward from there.
Yeah, I guess I just, I guess I just, I know that you want to talk to the city solicitor, and he gives an opinion on it and whatnot. And I say, I appreciate that you said it for two weeks, obviously the timely matter of things, in getting this determined. I guess I'm just trying to figure out, once he gives it, and he says that, yes, it is a grandfathered lot, do I
Well, we know it's a grandfathered lot.
Yeah.
Well, we believe it to be.
We believe it.
Based on this, it's a grandfather.
We think everything is there.
So then, I guess, based on this, I guess what I'm trying to determine, what at the next hearing we're I guess what we're trying to accomplish in the next hearing.
You know, really what's before the board is
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to really, yeah.
You know, whether we agree with Mr. Zupa or not, if we say, yes, it's a grandfathered lot, that's the answer we're looking for.
Yeah, so currently, he's looking for a finding, so he's looking, right now, he's looking for you to say, yes, this is grandfathered lot, he's exempt from current zoning, he's exempt from use variance, he's exempt from setbacks. I don't believe that all of that is necessarily true. If the board doesn't believe it's necessarily true, then did you come back for the required variance? So if they say no, they can't grant you a variance at that time, you have, you have to come back for it.
Right, I, I guess
In my communication with the city solicitor, he tends to agree. I want, I can't speak for him.
Sure, sure.
He tends to support my thought on this. So I think that's where the board is saying that, and that's what the solicitor is recommending, that you probably seek out the counsel to maybe have, you know, have that conversation there as well.
I, I guess what I was wondering, is it something that the board could determine, in fact, stated that, based on this information, that it is a grandfathered lot? And then at that point in time, I could come to you, present what it is that I'm looking to build here? And then if requirements are set for setbacks, then we could go from there? I guess it's, I guess what I was just trying to figure out, though. I'm just looking for clarification, how to proceed.
I understand. It's really, the question before the board, is this a grandfathered lot? You're, you're talking two things.
Yeah.
It's grandfathered, but then you can build what you want, because that's protected. The really issue before us is, is it a grandfathered lot or not? Second issue is, now, what can you build and when and how? It could involve use variance, it could involve dimensional variances.
Yeah.
But we need clarification on that part.
I understand you need clarification on that part. I guess, can we determine, I guess I'm trying to determine, again, the finding that it is in fact a grandfathered lot? And then that'll bring us into the next step of what I can put on it. Does that, I guess that's, does that make sense?
That's how I see it.
Yeah, okay.
Is determined it's a grandfathered lot.
Yeah.
If we research this, or we get the legal opinion
Yeah.
title rundown, that question's been answered. It is or it isn't. Then you've got the next step.
I'm trying to figure out what you're quoting.
I think then you confer with Mr. Zupa
Yeah.
and say, here's what I want to do.
Yeah.
Now, you may need clarification on part of the case law that you're quoting. Is that correct, does it apply here, and going forward? If, then that's where either our solicitor, et cetera, or if you hire an attorney, and the attorney does all the research, comes back and said, based on case law, here it is, that he's allowed to build or he's not allowed to build.
Yeah.
And then you go forward. If you're not allowed to build, then let's jump back to use variance and possible dimensional variance. If you're allowed to build, submission of plans, building permit, am I correct?
Okay, that's, that's perfect, that's, I was, I was just looking for clarification.
Are we sort of on board here?
Yeah, I think, I think I am, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I guess I will, I guess I'll back to the legal title opinion. Or if you have an attorney that you work with, and they look at all those documents, because I'm not that well versed in legal.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, so that's, that's from, like I said, that's right from the Massachusetts registry of deeds. Everything's recorded, making legal documents. In my mind, in my opinion, you know, I, to spend money to hire a lawyer to basically present what I presented, it's
Well, we can submit this to our
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that I won't do it if need be, but I'd, I'd rather not have
We can do that, and like I said, it's, the answer's not gonna be tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You know, and it may take a week, it may take a couple of weeks. But we can get an answer
Absolutely.
if this is valid.
Yeah.
Because I do not believe Attorney Flick saw those other deeds. I don't believe that. So I think giving him an opportunity to take a look at it.
All right. Would there be a way for me to submit at the same time the printout from the Massachusetts website? website that basically shows that's?
That would be great, because then I will include it when he reviews.
Should I send that to Mariela?
Right to Mariela.
Perfect, okay.
Okay?
Excellent.
So I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'm gonna continue, I'm gonna say to next, to July's meeting?
Okay.
Because, I mean, if everything comes in and meets it.
Yeah.
You know, then we can move along very quickly.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
I guess I'll have to be.
I was hoping you didn't say that.
As Mr. Zupa would tell you, I was trying to hopefully find something that could be established before the end of June, because I'm sure, I'm sure he's aware of the building changes that are coming up.
If you can't build a house, you can start studying to be a lawyer.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about, yeah, it's gonna be a lot more expensive to build. Yeah, exactly, it doesn't sound like I'm gonna put that permit in just yet, so.
All right, so I'm gonna ask, do I hear your motion to continue this to July hearing?
Second, and to waive the continuance fee.
And to waive the fee.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Seems to be sufficient.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion moved.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll see you in July, maybe.
Sounds good, yeah, hopefully it's not quite as hot as today.
Yeah, so send that document to Mariela.
Okay.
And we'll get in touch with the solicitor's office.
Okay, yeah, like I said, once I, I can print it out and email.
Because like I said, he is away, but maybe the assistant can work on it.
Absolutely.
Go try to get it going.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it, it was on the scene.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
We just went from coffee to dinner.
Wow. Wow. That was an on the contract. That was an on the contract. Which one are you doing next? In all seriousness, what's occurring here is really important, because if we make bad decisions, then later on, it gets worse.
The acoustics are better here than here, it's alright.
Yes. What I would like to do is private oversight, as Christine drew, that's what I'm doing. They've been here for a number of times. Can you just give us a minute so I can get your file out and get it ready?
All right, Mr. Chairman.
You're all good?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Yep.
You're welcome.
You cost me. We'll go to McDonald's, I got coupons. All right, so July, and then we have a.
July second.
We have July second. Okay. This, Mr. Foster's complete.
This is more, so I wanna talk to you about this later, okay? That's the dimensionals that we're sending over to you. The thing is, we're not believing in the circle, and he recognized this printout right in his hand, and he said. This goes with Foster. Next case before the board. Very familiar faces. It's private oversight, it has been continued several times, and it's really for the development of a housing project down off West Broadway. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, and we bring it pretty much, it's on record, we know what it is, because it's been before the planning board several times, and that's why it was continued for zoning, was waiting for either the planning board to make a decision or withdraw or whatever. So I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Christine Tree to bring the board up to date where we are and what the game plan is for private oversight.
So I am gonna be very brief today, I'm going to hand over to the board the, there's three copies, one for the lovely Mariela, this is just for the board's information. As you may remember, at the last hearing, we had had a hearing before the planning board, the planning department demanded that parking be located behind the buildings and not in front of the buildings. That unfortunately is not a financially viable plan. So what ended up having to happen with this plan is that it has been modified severely so that instead of providing multifamily housing, we have now submitted a, and the planning department required us to submit a new application, and so it's in the preliminary review phase right now. It's submitted as a subdivision, the subdivision contains sixteen two-family dwellings, they are dimensionally required, compliant. Two-family dwellings are allowed by right in GR3, and I've had a brief discussion with Mr. Zupa on this, it's my belief that there is no relief required in order to proceed with this version of the development before the board. Until we have that definitive meeting and approval, I will not know for certain if the planning board requires something else that would require us to come back to the board, but at this time, what I foresee is that we would be asking for leave to withdraw without prejudice, so that if there is any reason for this project to come back to the board, we would not have any time barred to deal with. So, that is where we are. If the board, you know, had an order delaying the effect of that until the first meeting, it would be, that would be, of course, appreciated by my client, by the applicant, if not, I don't wanna keep the board hanging meeting after meeting after meeting.
I understand.
So, and if Mr. Zupa had anything to add on that, we always appreciate his comment.
Any questions from gentlemen?
No.
No, so do you want to withdraw without prejudice? Okay, so do I hear your motion?
Make a motion to allow applicant leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to withdraw without prejudice, granted.
Thank you, and on behalf of myself and the applicant, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the time and effort that the board has put into this project and this piece of property, it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, you know, I think it's best, everybody will fold and get the best project and get it in lines.
It's a project that moves forward, hopefully, and that's what is needed, you know, at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Tree.
Thank you.
Let's have a look at it right now.
No, no, it's, I didn't know if you did this before I got here.
No, we were actually gonna get ready and keep it, like hunted and went to.
I was gonna get rid of the folder. Can you see it's here?
Who's Christine Tree gonna hold this around here? Okay, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
All right, so this is in regards to thirty-one City Hall Ave, so we recently had a site visit a few weeks ago, and I just wrote down, took some of the notes, some notes, and I think I have five questions that we discussed while you guys were on site, all right? The first one, which we talked a lot about, was parking. Where will the residents park their vehicles? So we do have ten indoor underground parking spots available for the residents, as well as right in the corner there of Connors and City Hall Ave.
Six.
We have six there, yeah, so six there, ten inside, so we have a total of sixteen parking spaces.
Eleven inside.
And that's what I was gonna say, I think we found an eleventh one inside, so we'll have seventeen parking spaces, private parking spaces, for the residents. Question two was, where will we put the mailboxes for the residents? So right now, the mailboxes are just outside the door, you know, up against the wall, so obviously if the post office decides they want them inside, otherwise we'll have the mailboxes just outside the door. Now, if they want them inside, we will have that front door, which leads us into another question, the front door will have a key code, so not everybody can just walk in, so if the post office does want the mailboxes inside, they'll be inside, the post office will have access, obviously, we'll give them the key, a key code to get in and out of the door, all right?
Okay, I think part of my concern, and I mean, it's not written into the ordinance and we talked about viewing it, and I think you were saying, yeah, we can move them right in here, especially with, we'll call them porch pirates today, if you've got fifteen units, and that's gonna be the central point for mail, and we know the usage for Amazon and packages and everything, so it's not a, it might be one visit, and it's not one package. I mean, you could have, say, one, and you could go beyond seventeen or fifteen packages being put right there in front.
So that's a different question that we have, so the mailboxes would be outside.
Okay.
But inside the locked doors, remember when you walk in the door on the right-hand side, we had talked about having shelving built, which is weird, that's where the package will be put, so it'll be inside behind a locked door. And then, something else we had talked about was the security, there will be cameras in the lobby, in the hallways, in the parking garage, and then outside as well, covering the, you know, access to the building. You know, if it's determined we need additional cameras, you know, perfectly fine, but that was another one of the concerns. So packages will be left inside the front door, but there'll also be a door to the hallway where the resident's apartments will be, which will be key entrance, so there will be separation, so even if someone comes in to deliver a package, they won't have access to get down to the hallway to the actual apartment.
Thank you for clarifying, it's sort of mixed.
Yeah, well, all the questions kinda run into each other, yeah. And that's, I mean, that's, that's all the questions. The last one was, what type of security will we have for the building to ensure packages are installed and the residents are safe, and that's where we'll have cameras throughout the building and on the outside. On the building on thirty-four Connors that we currently own, there's already a camera, you know, based in the parking lot, so.
And the tenants that park inside, they have access to their apartment inside?
Yes.
They don't have to.
Correct, there will be, so in order to get downstairs, there's a keypad on your left-hand side, which will, you know, improve, put a new one in, so they'll be able to get into the garage, and then from in the garage, there'll be a key entrance to go up the stairs if they desire.
Do you intend to put in a gate on the entryway into the garage, or just a keypad?
It'll just be the keypad to open the door.
It'll be a sliding gate or something?
No.
Very.
And that was pretty much what we discussed during the site visit. Any other, any other questions on that?
Just refresh my memory on lighting outside around the building.
Yeah, Phil, I'm gonna leave that one to the architect.
All right, Bill Lorian, three seventy-seven Main Street, Pittsburgh, lighting, so around the perimeter of the building, off the sidewalk, they're proposing wall sconces down that side, on tile lasters between the, where you see the existing windows now in the old police station. We'll have a couple lights in the parking lot that won't shine into the intersection, there'll be, you know, there are optics today that we can just call for it to be cut off so it doesn't go out into the street or the sidewalk for glare, I know that's a big problem.
Sort of a downward angle, so it goes towards the sidewalk.
Downward angle, you know.
Not to the residences or the commercial businesses across the street.
That's correct, it'd be a downward angle, and they used to do it with little baffles on the side to the lights, today they can do it with optics and cut the light off, so. You have some concerns about lighting in the parking garage, well, we'll meet the minimum or exceed the minimum what the code requires, so I put that on my drawings. I forget what, how many lumens I called for. Lighting requirements, ceiling mounted LED light fixtures spaced appropriately to provide a maximum power allowance of eight hundredths of a watt per square foot, lighting will be controlled with occupancy sensors. So as soon as that door opens up, a car that's driving through, the lights come up to a hundred percent, and typically, they're knocked back down to about twenty percent, so if somebody's walking through a door, they're not walking into a dark space. It's lit at, let's say, twenty percent, as soon as somebody comes through that door, then it comes back up to a hundred percent.
And how long do they remain on? For the length of time the person's in there, or?
Oh, it would have to be, yes, yeah. Because there's gonna be movement the whole time, so if somebody comes through that door, the light goes on, they're gonna have to walk over to the car, unlock the car, the car moving around will keep the lights on.
What about lighting? I refresh my memory, I'm gonna leave, where the mailboxes are gonna be, that little alcohol柜.
Yeah, well, they'll go down lights, LEDs above it, and then we're proposing another canopy on the outside of it, may have some downlights in that canopy too, so it's all gonna be well lit, the lobby is all gonna have downlighting inside it too.
It'll all be motion activated, or from dusk to dawn?
It'll probably be on a, that will probably be on a timer.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, light sensor, and then, you know, it'll go off at dawn.
Question, not on lighting, but your dumpster, inside or outside?
It's gonna be in that fenced-in area, in the back corner of the building.
Outside?
Outside.
What's it gonna sit on? Is it gonna sit on the dirt, concrete pad, or?
Well, right now, it's sitting on asphalt, I believe, yeah.
So it is on an asphalt pad already?
Correct.
One of the things we saw when it was down in the garage, it happened to be a rainy day, there was a significant amount of water down in the parking area. How do you plan on addressing that?
Significant amount of water, where was this?
Down in the parking garage.
Oh, I mean, that concrete right now is broken, so that's all gonna be, of course, repaired, and there's a trench drain right now.
It doesn't go the full way.
It's short, and it's not really capturing the water, so that's all gonna be rebuilt, and that'll capture water as it's coming down that ramp. And then on the inside of the parking garage, we have to have. And then on the inside of the parking garage, we have to have, you know, by code, we have to have, um, floor drains. Better than, you know, into a, uh, an interceptor for, for gas and, and sand. So that's all gonna be, it's all gonna be built by code.
And just, I think you mentioned that the exterior facade, either bricks or whatever, some of them falling off, so that's all gonna be redone?
Yes, yes, of course, yeah. And then the other side of the building facing the public parking garage, or parking, parking lot, that hasn't been completed yet, so that'll be all fixed up. That'll probably be either some type of brand-new siding, we were talking about possibly stone around the base, we're not really sure yet, but it's all gonna be brand-new and appropriately.
I'm gonna jump to snow now, because in your, for your initial presentation, you were gonna leave the snow piles for the city to take care of it, wouldn't you?
No, I don't, no, no, no.
No.
That was not the.
Dave Richards was gonna be hauling it away.
Yes, I knew you changed when we went there. You talked to, uh, Richards, Dave Richards?
Dave Richards.
And about his contract with snow removal and everything, is that still?
We would do a plowing, he would come and remove it with his loader and the dumpster. And then, remember, we, sorry, we discussed too, instead of putting it on the corner by the sidewalks, we found a space that's closer to the building, kinda in the middle, so it wouldn't impede any, you know, trap pedestrian traffic or be too high for people to see around.
Okay, so you're gonna have a contract with Dave Richards for?
All the way.
Uh, would you be willing to provide the board when that contract is signed?
Yeah, well, I'll be doing a storm, I'll, I'll build a maintenance.
When this signed, um, these suppliers will, that co, a copy?
Of course, sure.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions?
Yeah, I had one additional one, I, um, how much property do you have between, um, if you're looking at the pharmacy side of the building, over to the, the city lots, how much of that property do you own? How many feet?
How many would we own by purchase of this building?
Yes.
Well, let's see here. At the corner of the pharmacy, if you're looking at the pharmacy, the front-left corner, the property line is right on the building at that point. There's a bump out in the building. I think you've got this drawn too, but. So here's the pharmacy, here's that bump out, and so this is the property line, and then it runs right along the building here.
So this is the end of your property line, that dumpster that you're putting back here, is that sitting on the city property?
It's been used up to this point, correct?
Yeah, it's a generator.
It's up against the generator.
Well, that's the fenced-in generator, yeah.
Operating here right there. So it'd be the generator and the dumpster.
I understand, but whose, whose property is that?
It should be ours. It's part of our property.
It's not shown that way.
Where the generator is.
In the fenced-in area?
Yeah.
According to their drawings.
The generator runs the pumps to keep the place from flooding.
From, from the city, from, yeah, flooding.
It's a public building. Oh, then we put the dumpster on.
Yeah, the other option is we have this overhead door here that we can put it inside here, inside, so.
What kind of ventilation will you need if you put it inside? Does it, it's running either on propane or gas?
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about the generator inside.
The dumpster.
The dumpster.
Oh, I was talking to the generator.
No, the dumpster inside.
Okay.
Oh, and also, you know, you're talking about ventilation, the parking garage needs to be ventilated too. Yeah, so that's all, that's all gonna be taken care of.
Alright, so just clarifications, we're gonna talk to two different things. Your dumpster is not on your property?
Well, now it isn't, I guess.
There isn't, we don't have a dumpster.
We don't have a dumpster, yeah.
We don't, we don't own no dumpster in that. This is just.
That's just for the generator.
No, I understand, but your plans show it on city property, that's why I ask.
Mm-hmm.
And now the who owns that pump?
The pump?
Yeah, is that?
It's, it's inside the building.
Oh, it's inside, so what is in that little fenced-in area?
The generator to run the pump in case the power goes out. If the power goes out, that whole area floods.
No, I understand that, I'm just trying to establish that little section back there, who owns that? Is it part of your property, is it city, or?
So that where the generator is now is our property?
Doesn't show it that way.
So. So who's responsible for the generator?
City?
The city, the city, no, in the building, at one time it was a police station. Generator was installed by the city, so I assume that went with the building.
I just, I'd like some clarity, that's all. I know you said the question.
So we don't own the generator, that's what it's on.
Well, that's, we just need clarity and just so that we, everybody's in the same page.
So, so for us, I mean, I guess the question for us is then where would we be put in the dumpster, right? If the generator is in ours, I guess, it has nothing to do with us? So we would be put in the dumpster inside?
No, that's fine if you put the dumpster inside, but I just like some clarity on the pump, too, who owns that pump?
Well, the pump's inside the building, but I, but then the generator.
The generator, I know.
Yeah.
So it sounds like they put it on the city property. Not, yeah, okay, but if it's not on our property, it doesn't affect this, it's on ours?
Well, unless it's yours.
The generator just power the pumps, or does it power the?
It's probably large enough to power the building, because it was a police station.
I remember it was over a hundred, a hundred K伏 or something.
Yeah, that's bad.
It's a four hundred amp service in that building.
But yeah, it's probably for the police station, because, you know, all police stations need to have backup power.
And you need that in case the power goes out, so to run the pump? That's, that's true.
General, I want to know.
That's, that's an area that I think you really need to be clarified.
I might wanna check, maybe there is some type of easement that exists for, um, the generator being on top property, on the city property, because I'm sure it's been there for, well, they just did the parking lot over. They knew it was there, it would've been identified at that point. There's gotta be some correspondence somewhere, somehow. May, if you're talking about, you know, keeping the building afloat essentially, is there an agreement or an understanding that if the pump fails, is the city will replace that pump, is that your pump to replace? You know, there's all these, there has to be an understanding somehow, some way.
Yeah.
Of how, 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 how that infrastructure is maintained.
The fence is fixed to the building too.
So I just, you know, just, you just, I, I just wanna be clear, you don't wanna go into the question.
I agree with you, that, that's gotta be some degree, I'll call some degree of ownership. Who owns it, is it leased back to you people? Or if something happens and the city shuts it down, now you have a problem.
Now, you, you've got a PNS or something on, correct? That existing owner must have something in their, in their files about the, the pump, the generator, you know, and maybe because it's a mutual benefit to your building and the city, that there is a, and some kind of easement for you to have it on, on town property. I don't know, it's gotta be out there somewhere, there's too many, you know, it would.
What did that, what did that show on a title search? If there was any type of easement during the agreement?
That should, if there are easements, that should show in the, the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I, ideally if there's a recorded easement, it would have to be a recorded easement, and you guys will find that on the title search, it'd be with the registry deeds. Um, I think, I, I think the board is, what they're really concerned with is, let's identify who actually owns that pump. Do you guys own that pump, does the city still own the pump? So that, that's a big question, that you, you don't wanna go into a development like this and, and have it be city-owned or not owned by you. You definitely wanna have that clarification. How big is this pump, do you know?
It's the generator.
The generator. Oh, generator. Can it be relocated to another spot on the property?
It could be.
Well, I mean, if it's on town property, I mean, it gets removed, if the pump doesn't run, then that's not their responsibility, if the town floods out. No, no, I'm, I'm asking if, I'm asking if you guys can relocate the generator to somewhere else on the property, because it only serves your property.
It could be moved to. Most definitely.
Yeah, so.
I don't know if you have much real estate to, to move it to, though, because you've got, um, looking at the building on the right-hand side, I think the property line is pretty close between the communal apartments and.
The bump out of the building on the, on the first floor also has a roof, a flat roof that it could go to. The building has a flat roof it could always go to, I've done that before with generators.
On the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, you, I think we're just raising a question, and you, you wanna be clear with what you're buying, what your ownership is.
Well, people are smart, if they own it now, they must have some kind of.
Worth it.
There's gotta be some document somewhere, because you don't wanna be caught, all of a sudden that goes down, and that was a major impact on the city.
Like I said, the city just redid that parking lot, so the, the question had to have come up, guaranteed. Somebody saw it, and it's addressed. You know, maybe, uh, planning department has something in their records. And it's, because I think that was a, a planning department, uh, project, so they may have something in their records. Yeah, I just want, wanna be sure that, you know, be sure what you're buying.
Yeah, and actually you're protected, you don't wanna be, uh, fifteen tenants in there, and all of a sudden, you have a problem with that unit. Or you find out you don't own the unit, and somebody else will, will take it out. So it's, I think it's a long-term issue that you're looking at here to protect yourself.
Is that plus, you know, the pumps, who owns and maintains the pumps?
Yeah, I mean, there may be a document in existence that says it's shared or there's an easement, and A and B maintained or whatever, or both responsible for. But I think it's worth some research to find out the status of that unit.
Because I, I kinda have a recollection, and it may be before that pump was even installed, and, you know, there were instances where there was a fair amount of water in that garage section, I think that's why the whole floor and everything has got that false floor. So, you, you know, you wanna be sure.
Okay, I'm gonna move on, I've got, a document was sent to me. Yeah, it's from the Department of Community Development and Planning, and it's now a document of this case, so I'm just gonna read what it says. March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, zoning board of appeals, one fifteen Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. Regarding thirty-one City Hall Avenue, Gardner, Mass., special permit application. Dear zoning board, I am writing to offer some initial comments for the above referenced project. The project is located in the city's downtown business district, the downtown urban renewal area, and is proposing a mixed-use building on Connor Street with existing commercial on the street level and residential on the second floor. The project also proposes a residential development of City Hall Avenue at street level in a one-story building. It's my understanding that the two buildings are joined one another with a shared wall in the air, in the rear. The pro, the proposed mixed-use project on Connor Street is consistent with the city's goals within the downtown urban renewal plan, DIRK, by supporting the rehabilitation of second-story residential units. However, the City Hall Avenue project proposes to rehabilitate newly rehabilitated commercial office space into residential on the street level, which is not consistent with our urban renewal goals and economic development goals in the city's community development plan of creating an increased tax base and jobs by eliminating modern commercial office space. Other questions and comments about the proposed project should be addressed. I will have some comments for this after. What type of housing is being proposed? The city currently has a fifteen percent low to moderate income LMI housing stock, well over the state's ten percent for sure. Over five hundred, hundred units of LMI residential units identifying in our LMI inventory are located in the general vicinity of the project, and there are many more that are not identified on our restricted inventory but catered to, catered to LMI populations. While the city supports a diverse housing stock throughout, we are trying to promote additional market rate housing in our downtown. What is the applicant's track record and experience of residential development? What type of construction material will be used for the building, the build-out? If approved, the city should require high-end materials if considering the approval of a special permit, and this should be considered in conditions if a special permit is granted. Last, lastly, the applicant is proposing fourteen one-bedroom units. As with any project, I recommend diversifying the unit size with equitable amounts of one- and two-bedroom units, along in a three-bedroom unit if it can be accommodated. These are my additional comments. If this project moves forward, I will most likely have additional comments for the board. So I guess, my general, my comments, I understand where he's coming from. But a number of the issues he's identified are not under the purview of the zoning board. We do not look at what building materials you're using. We do not look at diversifying the population. We do not give recommendations of how many single multi-bedroom units you need to have, nor the size of the units. That is not under our charter. If any of it comes under the charter, it would fall towards Mr. Zupa, and he would be looking at that. So, you know, I mean, all communities are supposed to have a ten percent low-income or LMI. Garden is exceeding that, but it's not the board's responsibility to monitor that? Say we exceed it, so let's not do more, and you have to do market rate permits? That is not in our charter. Our charter is, George, that's what you're asking for. What's required is a special permit in certain zone, what the use is gonna be, and how you're handling the project, and is it safe for the community, safe for the people, and a benefit to the city. So that's my comment, but since it was submitted to the board, I have the requirement to read it. So if you have any questions on this, we can give you a copy of this, and I think you would probably wanna have a discussion with Mr. Pierre Vado, the planning board, and see where he's coming from, but most of the issues here, we don't rule on. So I just wanted to make it known. Alright, so I think you've met everything that we've talked about. If you're, this would be a condition when we go to vote, if we decide to approve it. Uh, but your dumpster would need to be on some kind of concrete blacktop pad, okay? Uh, you have to address the lighting, I think that's adequate. I think the biggest issue, we need a clarification of that pump. And I think you're all in agreement to that.
The generator.
The generator.
Generator is, according to our plan they provided, survey plan, it is on their property that goes with that generator.
Okay.
If you look at, um, there was a plant here. Property line goes, looks like right along the building face.
Mm-hmm.
Then comes ninety degrees up to here, there's the building face.
But that, is that the same as what I just saw?
This is, this is what came to us. So basically, according to this.
No, I understand, but it's, that's why I asked where the property line is, I understand.
Comes here, it goes like this.
So you, you have a civil drawing there?
Yeah.
Is it by Hannigan?
That's all Hannigan's good as a drawing.
Hannigan, yeah. Looks like this enclosure is, is.
I know, it's like, that wasn't.
It doesn't, according to this, it doesn't look like it. The, uh, the bearings of the property line, if you go right to the corner of the building, there are two little arcs that come out of it. And that's, that's where it's measured to.
It's got this. This line here comes to. This line here comes to here, to that point, over to here. This is a bearing and a, meets and, and then comes back along the building. So here's the building. Then this is a little bump out right here, which corresponds to.
I'm glad.
This is, this is where the fencing there is, in that corner.
And I think the fenced in area is not on your property.
Then that's what I just said.
Oh, I thought you said the generator.
Generator.
So it doesn't appear on. It's in the fencing.
That's the issue.
Okay, I misunderstood. Did you see that?
So anyway, one of the conditions would have to be the resolution.
So on this one, so where you've got the generator, here is this trash enclosure.
Well, the trash enclosure can go, see the bump out of the building, there's an overhead door right there?
Yes.
It can go inside there.
And the generator is located in the same corner?
It'll stay right where it is.
I was just understanding, I was assuming that this indication or this enclosure was with the generator. Okay.
So my question now, if you put your dumpster inside the building.
Yeah.
Generally, a truck will come to pick up a dumpster, pick it up.
It'll, it'll be a rollaway.
Will be a rollaway?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, a truck comes up, they roll it out, and it'll pick it up, and then they'll roll it back in.
Are you satisfied now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you?
Yeah, as long as you put that in as a condition.
What?
That they address that, the generator, the location. As to whether or not it can stay there or not, who owns it, all of that. Can this make that part of the conditions then, that that does follow through?
Yes.
If we vote in favor?
If you vote in favor, yes, I'm just.
Let's not get ahead of it.
No, 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 I just wanted to.
Are you all set?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are you comfortable to move forward on this, make a decision? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion, and discussion would be a condition or a couple of multiple conditions, well, you got a condition.
Well, the condition is the resolution of the ownership of the generator and exactly at that point what they're going to do with it. And also moving the dumpster into another location.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to your first motion, uh, condition. You said a resolution of the ownership of the generator. If it's not there, or theirs, what do we do? I would say, you would suggest alternative, uh, action.
Yeah.
That would be acceptable, really, to the building commissioner. But that, you know, you've got a resolution that puts it either on your property or you've got some kind of document that says it's ours, shared by two entities.
Yeah, or that document could say that it's theirs and there's a recorded easement permitted to remain in its current location.
That's right.
So that, that's a big question that you're touched on, that definitely needs to be resolved.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Definition if there is an easement, and how much that we have of that. Randy, just want to read those conditions.
Sure, I think so. Dumpster on a previous bed. Provide the board with verification of a snow removal contractor.
Yep.
We don't care who it is. You know, Dave Richard or John Smith or who.
Yeah, I mean, with the contractor, whoever your snow removal contractor is.
And then, um, with regard to the generator, resolution of the ownership maintenance of the generator to, um, satisfaction of the building commissioner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that works.
Just to confirm, you had fourteen apartments?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
They have seventeen spaces. I have one more condition. I've been thinking of it all day, and I'm all flocking away not mentioning it. Your spaces in the garage, are they going to be lined and numbered?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that'd be a condition, they're going to be lined and numbered.
On the drawing, it actually shows it.
All apartment spaces will be lined side number. Otherwise, I'm sure we don't want a, a car rally in the garage.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want a free-for-all.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
When I walked back in, they was talking about the mailroom, was that correct? There's going to be a mailroom inside the building?
There'll be a package room, not US mail.
US mail, okay, so the building code requires, you know, the addition or creation of ten units or more. I must notify the post office of that. Mr. Lorgan is, is familiar with that requirement. Ultimately, it's the postmaster's jurisdiction as to where.
That's what we said, we're going to put it outside unless the post office wanted it inside.
Yeah, and, and they're, and they're very specific, they'll, they'll tell you exactly where it's got to go.
So if we put a condition of approval by the postmaster?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's ten units or more, it's, it's the postmaster's jurisdiction.
Yep.
I say we stay out of it.
Yeah, I, I personally, I wouldn't add it. They're going to, they're going to do it anyway, and I have to send notification to the post office anyway.
Okay, so we're all set, conditions?
Four. Four conditions.
Okay.
Good.
All set, right? Okay, all those in favor of this application with the four conditions that have been mentioned? Say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? No opposition? Application motion passed.
Special permit granted.
Special permit granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. Do you want a copy of this from the plan?
Yeah, would you mind?
Mariella, make a copy and send it to them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, I'm bringing.
Really well. This table is too small.
Okay, I know I put it here. Next case is going to be Wilson Camargo. Okay, I have a notification here. You're planning to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, sir.
And there's a letter in here. Well, I don't need to see the letter. If you mistake that you want to withdraw your application without prejudice, then we can move on it.
Do I say my name?
Say the name and address for the record.
My name is Wilson Camargo. I live at one eighty-nine West Broadway in Gardner. And I wish to withdraw my, um,
Administrative. Administrative appeal.
Administrative appeal, with, without prejudice.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. Camargo?
I do not.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No?
No.
All those in favor of approving the withdrawal without prejudice? May Wilson Camargo say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposition? Withdrawal without prejudice approved.
Thank you, sir.
We haven't done that yet.
No.
Okay, the next we're going to do is Eric Salmy. Over two fifty-six High Street, Gardner, Mass.
How you doing, Eric Salmy, one fifty-three Scott Road, Westminster, uh, Pittsburgh, Mass. Contractor representing Mr. and Mrs. Yacine. Basically, they have a, look for relief from the setbacks. They have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, it was built in the sixties. It's a small house. They have a, a full foundation with their oil tank, their utilities. And there's a concrete slab above it, a structural slab, next to the driveway. And it's thirteen foot four from the property line. As surveyed, there's a plot plan that was, has two points shot, I think, two years ago. And, um, we want to enclose it and basically turn it into like an entranceway, like a three-seasons room. Or, um, just enclose it before the slab starts to deteriorate too bad. Because again, their boiler, their oil tank, everything is under that slab.
Now, are you not, when you talk about opposing, you're not doing any further violation of the setbacks? You're just going along the primary exact lines?
Yeah, don't, that's it, it's already there, we're just going to build the three walls and put the roof on top of it.
Is it, um, as part of your package you submitted, some photographs, is it above this?
So those are, those are like walls that they built on top of the slab.
So it's not the, what looks like maybe the driveway?
Correct, not the driveway.
So there'll be no further extension to the lot line than what is existing in this?
Nope, we're demoing those bricks and we're just going to enclose it.
And there's a cellar underneath yourself?
Yeah.
Oh, you're going to take down those bricks?
Yeah. They're, they're really thick there. It's, they're built on top of this slab, there's a full, like I said, block foundation under it. But it's like a hollow double wall.
I understand, but by removing that, you know, now you're creating a barrier, okay, I understand now.
Okay, I'm just going to interject here because the document, we get rolling on it. There is a denial letter, just so the record, I'm going to read the denial because you started addressing some of it. Date issued, May first, two thousand twenty-four, Eric Salmy, two fifty-six High Street, Nate Map Lot, W twelve. It looks like eleven, one, six, oh, these are spaces, W twelve, sixteen, eight, one twenty-five. Dear Mr. Salmy, Unfortunately, the Gardner Building Department must deny your application at this time. The reason for the denial is outlined in paragraph below. We will reconsider your application without additional fees if you submit documentation indicating that the deficiencies found in the application have been corrected within one hundred and eighty days of May first, two thousand twenty-four. The following deficiencies were found in the application, building code violation one oh five point three, point one, number one. Project does not conform to local zoning ordinance. Detailed description. As your property is considered to be pre-existing non-conforming structure and you wish to increase the non-conforming nature of the structure, a variance will need to be applied for and approved by the zoning board of appeals as outlined in the below section. Paragraph six seventy-five dash four twenty, non-conforming uses in structures. Two, variance required, except as provided in subsection C four and five below. The reconstruction, extension, or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase an existing non-conformity or create a new non-conformity shall require the issuance of variance from the zoning board of appeals. Please be advised that the significant changes to the original plan that result in a substantial reevaluation of the project could result in the need for a new application and additional fees. If you feel that we are in error and your application is complete and free of code deficiencies, you and me appeal this determination to the Massachusetts Board of Building Regulations and Standards within forty-five days of this notice respectfully. Rick D'Amato, local building inspector. Okay, that's the document we have. Okay, so I just, I think you answered him, but I was sort of looking at the map and. Just to reiterate, this blue area, that's a driveway.
Correct, correct.
This is the area you're talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
But I, again, I just want to clarify, you're going to remove that section? That brick wall and all that, and then rebuild it?
So that's what we're going to do, is we're going to frame walls and we're going to put vinyl siding windows up to match the house.
Understand, but you're going to remove those, that wall? So, my understanding is you've now eliminated the violation, and now you're going to recreate it. That's why you're here for a variance?
No, if, if I may, yeah, not necessarily. Um, so when this application came, it was, the building permit application was submitted to Inspector D'Amato initially. Uh, when you look at a structure such as this, it has a foundation wall in place which creates the, the non-conforming structure. Now, if you want to add full-height, uh, wood frame construction wall, exterior walls, extend the roof out, which is what they plan to do, that increases the non-conforming nature of the structure itself. Therefore, the variance require.
So I understand. Moving closer to, that'll be okay.
But they are, but they're, so if they're going to, even if they're going to remove this, they're now adding, so this will be treated similar to if you were looking at an uncovered porch, then now you wanted to add walls onto the porch, you had wanted to add a roof onto the porch. So this would be extending the main structure of the house closer to the property line. Just because there's a foundation here, that doesn't, that doesn't exempt the, the rest of the house from being, um.
So when a new, new construction comes in and they provide you with a foundation plan, do you measure side setbacks from the foundation plan, or do you measure it from whatever the wall is going to be?
So we've met, so it's both, we get a foundation as-built, and then if they have any decks or anything that are on it, that's also, that's also included on it. Now, if they decide to later on take an open deck and build walls around it, that increases the non-conforming nature of the house potentially, if it's already non-conforming.
But if that, if that wall maintains the exact same distance
Yeah.
from the lot line, you're not really adding to the non-conformity.
But it, but in, in this case, they would be because now they're adding existing roofing structure closer to it as well.
I understand that, so, but I was back to another one, I just need some clarification on. It was always my understanding that if you remove the structure, because you're not measuring it down to the foundation, you're measuring it from the wall. Once you remove that, you've eliminated, you know, your, the violation.
Yeah.
And when you rebuild.
Or the non-conforming nature, yeah.
For the non-conforming, so now if you rebuild, you're back in violation again, and you have to come in.
Then you'd have to.
Correct. And that's, so I'm trying to understand, this, so it feels to me like it's kind of both. You know, he's going to remove the, the violation and reestablish the violation, plus a little roof overhang or whatever.
Correct, yeah, so plus they're going to, they're going to add to the roof overhang and add additional walls as well, so there, there's two things happening here.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there was, there's basically two, that we're going to increase it, we're going to remove that, but also, um, Rick had told me to make sure I put it in there because it's only thirteen foot four setback right now to the foundation to have both of those in there. The change in the structure, but also put in that it's under the fifteen feet from the side.
So, this is, it's causing me a little confusion here, are you going to remove all of it?
So all those brick rails, they're just sitting on the slab, those are just like decorative brick.
So you've got a chimney here.
Which is right around it, yeah.
For all the brick that I'm looking at from the chimney out towards the side boundary, that's all coming down?
Yes.
And I'll say why my confusion. And this was not through Gardner, but this was through Pittsburgh. Company I used to work for bought a building. Company I used to work for bought a building and they were gonna tear it down. And because they were gonna have a violation, and I'm not saying who the building commissioner was, I don't know. But the decision was, they left up two feet high in a, a corner like this and then built the rest of the building. They did not have to apply for a variance.
Really?
Because part of the original building was still there. And part of what was hitting the violation was still there. So they were just building, so Tom, I'm sort of looking at you because this is actually happening out of Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
They tore the, you see the ninety-degree corner right here?
Mm-hmm.
They left a ninety-degree corner probably about three feet on each side and two feet high. And the building department said, that's fine, you can go ahead and build the rest of the building. No violation, so that's why there's a little confusion in my mind.
Yeah, so I, I've had municipalities ask me to do the same thing. It's kind of a gray area. It's not really, it doesn't fall necessarily under the category of demolition or catastrophe. Uh, when you, when you start applying demolition or catastrophe, rebuilding in the same, same footprint, that's a full demolition of the house, not a partial demolition. I've had other boards in the past and other, and other building departments not allow me to do that as well. Uh, where it turns into more having to do with variances, now they're extending roof lines out as well beyond what's, what's existing. So now they're taking the actual outer wall of that home and extending that closer to, to the lot line.
Right, so if there was no extension of the roof line, let's say this is.
Like flush rakes or something?
If they're building up and the roof line comes but stops exactly here, there'd be no overhang. You really couldn't put on downspouts or anything like that. Perfectly sure of where it is.
Or you step in that wall, exterior wall, eighteen inches.
You, you, you could potentially do that. I think what it looks at as well is you gotta look at, what's the recorded, um, foundation as-built currently? We haven't found one, so, and because that wasn't standard practice either. So without having a recorded as-built like we do today, like we require today, we don't know if that additional brick wall was actually recorded there in, in that current location. Uh, so it does leave a, a little bit of a gray area. And when I met with Inspector Germano, we, we looked at it and said, you know, it's probably best to err on the side of caution because we, we are lacking some documentation for the property.
I think that the house probably predates zoning.
So there's a plot plan in there, um, that was on record here in the town, which is, it's later than page five, but it's after the twenty twenty-two plot plan that is stamped and it shows that slab structure in the driveway. And this is about early nineteen sixties.
Yeah, so predates zoning.
Predates zoning.
Yeah, so it, it predated it and the homeowner had somebody come in in twenty twenty-two and shoot the front corner of the house and the back corner of that, um, foundation. So it's, we wouldn't be demoing the foundation of the slab. We'd just be removing those brick walls so we could build wood frame walls sided so that it matches the house.
But your overhang on the roof would be increasing the non-conformity.
So we could do flush rakes on the house, which is, I mean, we're talking a two-by-six with aluminum wrap, which barely sticks out. You know, we don't have to do built-out rakes on the house. And realistically, the overhangs for the, um, gutters and stuff are in the front and the back, which is, which would match what's existing on the house right now.
And if you did not put any gutters along that side, but if the water is running off it, we're right.
There's no side, that's a gable end. That's a gable end, so there's nothing overhanging.
All right, Randy and Mel have any questions right now?
Not right now.
Randy?
No.
Okay, there are three items for variance. You wanna address those?
Yeah, so, um, through my notes here. All right. So variance requirement answered, so one of the, number one was, the question was, literal enforcement of the provisions of the code would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner or repellent owing to circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, topography, land structures, and especially affecting land or structures, not affecting generally the zoning district which it's located. So we're not doing anything to the grade. We're not adjusting it. We're not changing it. We're not touching the soil. We're building on the slab. We don't have to put a foundation, footings or anything in. You know, we're not adding something that's different, a Quonset hut or a metal building or anything. We're basically just extending the house so it matches the rest of the neighborhood. So that's our answer to number one. Number two is desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. I mean, it's, it's within the footprint of the existing foundation and, I mean, I don't really think there's anything there that affects that. So our answer was, proposed work doesn't fall under substantial detriment to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. Building's existing, the foundation's there, we're just extending the house. Number three would be desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the code but not otherwise. You know, it'll be built to code. It's gonna match the house. There's nothing, you know, crazy going there. We're not putting a dance club or nightclub or anything. It's basically a closed porch.
Okay, you have a stairway here on one of the pictures.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be removed?
No.
It's just gonna stay there?
Yep.
So you'll be coming off, will there be an examining quality of a two or three season room?
Yeah, yep.
Will there be a doorway that comes out onto that stairway?
It comes out into the driveway closer towards the front of the house. So it won't be, if you look at the plans, I have a small copy of the plans in here.
So if I'm looking at this picture.
Yeah.
Your stairway is here.
Yes.
So it's really not part of the, the three season room.
Correct, there's, there's, the stairway stays, the door is towards the front of the driveway. There's nothing. That stairway is outside of the three season room.
So no exit doorway onto the driveway?
There, there is. It's up towards the front.
It's towards the front.
Where, where the white, where the white, white?
Yeah, right up towards that front brick wall.
This is, you see where this white railing is?
Yes.
That's approximately the location of the door that's gonna come off.
Okay.
According to the sketch.
Yeah, well, number one condition is one of the hardest ones to meet because you're not touching the soil and, you know, it's pretty flat.
Yeah.
There's no real contours or anything. Okay, do you have any questions now?
No.
Well, you're good.
I'd like you to look at this. Usually take a look at it.
Why? I, I think that the applicant is providing good documentation, photos, and stuff.
No change on that stairway, right?
No.
Well, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
You wanna vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, you ready to vote?
Yep, well, you need to ask if anybody has.
I will.
No.
Are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application in addition to the response?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would say I, I've, I've taken a ride by the property. You know, there is some significant green space, some rhododendrons, um, that, that do shield the property from, from the, from the other neighbors. In my opinion, I don't think that it's, it's detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, there is still an asphalt driveway next to the wall.
I've driven up by and I saw the greenery and all that.
Yeah, it's like a whole wall of abracadines on the property line.
And they can get big.
I think they're about twenty feet tall right now.
Okay. Any other representatives of the city to speak regarding the application? There are no other representatives. Any abutters to the property would like to speak in favor of? Any abutters to the property would like to speak in favor of? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Any opposition to this application? For the record, none. These two people, are they the owners of the property?
They are.
If you wanna say something to support this, you please do.
Please say yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or against this property, I mean, application? None, okay. Throw a call for vote. I have motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the, based upon the information provided, approve the variance to Eric Salmy and the scenes.
Second.
Any further discussion?
To allow an addition on top of an existing foundation.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No opposition?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have fourteen days to write the decision and.
Yeah, there's fourteen days to write the decision. Once you receive the written decision, it's gonna be timestamped. There's a twenty-day waiting period from that day before any construction should begin.
Okay.
Okay, because if you do begin some construction, the building commissioner has the right to come and shut you down.
Yep.
Okay, so you will get it, could be three weeks before you get it. We got two weeks to write it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I know.
I know, one after another.
We've done, we've done fast there. Eric Salmy?
Did we move that one?
It was just, yeah, Moon Hill or, or Preston Street, one of the two.
Let's see, let's do, check, Moon Hill. Give me a couple of minutes to get the file. Okay. Let me get the application, let me read it. It's the application of Moon Hill Brewing, DBA, Gardner Real House. Variance for a sign that is outside of compliance. Okay, so that's a very brief definition of what we got here. So I'm gonna turn it over to, first of all, to Mr. Walton. And your representative here from Mount Lyman, and your name, sir?
Jake Lyman.
Jake Lyman. Okay, so either both of you or one of you can present the request. So who will be presenting?
We haven't decided.
Okay, well, we could adjourn.
I'll, I'll present and he'll support.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. The, uh, the sign is a bit bigger than the, uh, than the ordinance or whatever it is allows. And, uh, I mean, the basic, the basic idea here is that the, the sign was designed in, uh, in proportion to the building. The building is like three stories, concantiated together. It's a, you know, it's, um, six, it's a sixty-foot wide building. And the sign looks really nice on it, but it's taller than the four-feet limit, I think.
Right.
Um, and the, the limit, or the sign is designed to be six, close to seven feet tall. But if you, you know, if you look at it, it suits the building. Now, I've, I've addressed all the points in the application as to why I think this is a good idea. And why we would like to feel like we deserve variance. However, I submitted the original application and I don't have a copy myself of the points that I wrote out. Which is dumb if you don't.
Well, I mean, in your, excuse me, in your plan.
Yeah.
At the back of the building, you say new sign.
I'm sorry?
On your plan, in the back of the building, it says new sign. That's why I was confused, because the signs that you show in front of the building, which is all on par.
This. I think that this was just, um.
That's why I was confused.
Yeah, I'm.
Now, is that when you originally, like, you put the deck all back? The signage all back?
I, I don't know.
I'll take that back, yeah.
I don't know, probably an example.
This looks like the design plan you guys had from when you did the deck and you grabbed a sign out back. That's what it looks like. Looks like you've just, to me, it looks like you just reused what you had.
Okay, um, that was just submitted to show the building, just to show the plot plan of the building. It wasn't, it wasn't meant to show the sign that thing right there.
Okay, I guess my question gets a little more fundamental. What is the total square footage of this sign that you're putting up?
So the total square footage, you've got three different components to it because.
I know, it says circle one that.
The circle one right there is, if you do the whole thing, including the address part and the black background and all that, it's seventy-two square feet. If you go with the lettering and a little bit of the component there, you've got about twelve square feet.
Yeah, but you're really, it's, you're looking at seventy-two square feet.
Of the whole, of the whole image itself, which, but let's talk about the construction of it a little bit first. So, so it's not, it's not like a six or seven-foot-high price chopper letter that's just gonna blow red. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a black box. And if you go further back in the pages I just handed out, it'd be more of, have that sort of, of a new age look to it on that part right there.
It's not gonna say Seagrove.
No, 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 this is just, this is just for, for samples of the, of the push-through letter style that we're, we're going for for that, for that premium modern piece of it. And then it's the next page is just some letter, that was like the, some letters we did, similar to what we're proposing for the actual alehouse letters. So those wouldn't be lit. Those would just be a white letter on the building with the old style of moose neck lighting that it had before.
I just wanna ask you a question.
Yeah.
Because I've been on many sign cases.
Oh, sure.
And it depends how you wanna measure a sign. I've had applicants come in and say, your sign really is the Gardner from T to R.
Yeah.
But it sits on a ba- black backdrop. And the other side is, you say the sign is really from the left side to what's called right where that light post is.
Yeah.
That is the sign. That's totally, but you don't have letters all over.
So how is it defined in Gardner measure sign? Because I've read it in other ones before where it would say you draw a box around the letters and that's how you find...
So Gardner zoning ordinance is not specific on how you measure the signs?
Yep.
I have measured them exactly how you're referencing them. So if you have individual letter signs in there in a row, you, you basically do a picture around those signs and that's how you measure.
Around that.
Yeah.
Around that.
Yeah, correct.
Around that. Yeah.
See, I've meted some that the commissioner said, "No, here's your sign, your letters just happen to be in here."
Yeah.
So that's what they took and they would say, "You violate the eighty feet rule." Even though it might have a six foot sign.
In, in the city of Pittsfield, it is, in the zoning thing, they have a, an illustration of how they want it measured. Just for, for that clarification, so they don't end up in this, the net.
In your, we'll call it the circle portion of the sign.
Sure.
What you're showing in yellow, is that going to be like what's illuminated in your?
Yes.
So that?
That would illuminate.
So it's not just the letters, that is the color, so that to me is part of the sign.
Yes. So that, so that yellow would...
So that would be the seventy-two square feet.
Well, most of the time I've been around, it's, it's always the the background as well as the letters.
Yeah.
Just to be...
Sure, for that.
Especially if you have it featured somewhere on that background.
Well, just to be honest, I, I owned a sign manufacturer for years.
Yeah.
Down there, so I went through many presentations on this.
Now, is this...
There's a lot of variations.
Is this white line to be illuminated as well?
That was proposed to be illuminated. It just has like a LED band across the bottom of the building.
And that includes the exterior, the circle portion of the sign?
If you look at this, for example, I didn't have the knowledge to make it quite exactly the way I wanted to with the casting of the lights on the letters. What we were proposing is everything you see here that's in white or yellow, except for the Gardner Real House letters, were illuminated. And then these right here would just have just the neck lighting kind of casting down on them. So it's kind of a mix of the old and the new going on there.
Yeah, so the whole Moon Hill, all the letters, everything's illuminated?
The letters of the push-through illuminated letters, yeah.
LED?
Correct. Yep. Uh, similar to this sample, a couple pages ago.
Adjustable intensity?
Could be. So I mean, if it, if it was, a lot of times the push-through letters, they're there, you see them, but it's not, it's, it's not like the price chopper red.
That's what we would call price chopper lights too.
What's that?
That they, there's no glare to them. That's what we would call, right, the scifers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if we're going to have illumination and set, you know, to a degree of brightness.
Yeah.
I understand, I mean, we also don't want it to interfere with traffic.
Sure.
You know, I mean, you want to illuminate it to identify it and people will see it, but you don't want people driving and they going, "Look at that." Because they pick up that brightness and they're trying to see it.
Oh, sure.
And that can be a dangerous, I'll call it intersection area where you are.
So this, this is a lot less of what you're saying than, like, if it was a sign cabinet with a white black sand face in it with a total white glow and then some red letters on it or something like that, you don't have that. Here you go, exactly what I'm talking about.
I know.
How many, how many white sign cabinets do you see out there that you can't read it because all there is is the glow of the white?
Oh, yeah.
I, I fight that with customers all the time, to not do a white background because of that. So...
Just to add again, the Gardner and Ale House not going to be illuminated.
Correct. It would be dotted with goose neck lighting.
And their illumination is coming off, off the logo?
Yes. Yeah.
Did you do a lumen calculation at all on the lighting?
I haven't, no.
Wall mounted or off the wall?
So the, the, the letters here for the Gardner, and it's not, well, this was actually the logo that was on it. It was just Gardner Real House, it was settled on.
Yeah, yeah.
These would be just like the, the individual letters, like I showed there, on a rail because there's an architectural
facade.
Facade with a, with texture to it. So we'd just use a small, two small black rails mount the letters to hook them straight to the wall. This piece here, because there's a little bit of trim on the building, we definitely would have to bracket it somehow, but it would still be flush mounted to the wall. You know, we've been up there a couple times for some of the stuff, it's, it definitely be done.
So if you're, we'll call flush mounting, but defining flush mounting, it could be a couple of inches off the wall?
So the cabinet's probably about four to five inches thick and then you'd be looking at, it could be a couple of inches because of the architectural features. The full depth of all the signage would not exceed, there's a ledge on the building right here. It would not exceed that dimension. We'd probably still be back behind it by four to eight inches, something like that.
Okay, do you have any questions right now, Randy? No.
No.
Want to address the three conditions?
Oh, wait a minute, I have it right here.
You've got it too, so...
I've got it too, so, please. So the, I'll just read and then maybe, you know, whatever.
Final question.
The sign in question is an integral part of the rebranding and grand reopening plans of, of the Ale House. Given the Ale House is broad front and the sign's modern design, the four foot vertical limit would be a handicap to our plans which desire to bring the restaurant into a more modern and upscale setting. It would be anti-climatic against our business's rebranding plans to be limited to four feet instead of the desired six plus feet, in my opinion. I say five feet there, that's wrong. In my opinion, the sign enhances the business district and lends the city an air of vibrancy typical of thriving downtown areas. I mean, this, the city is definitely experiencing a comeback for the first time in the eighteen years that I've been there. And I think this would help lead the way. It's, it's the beginning of the business district as you're coming up to the Ale. It just looks nice. It's big, it's bigger than we had, but the one that we have up there, you don't even notice. It says Gardner Ale House, it's dark, there's four goose neck lights, you can't see it. The Ale House looks closed, you know, and this will make the Ale House look older. Overhanging on the sidewalk, what, I have a sign that'll remain too. What about that? Is that to remain as well? There's a, there's a brand new sign there already, it's called a blade.
Well, it's a blade style sign, yeah.
It, it's not hanging, but it sticks out from the building. And it looks like, you know, this, this logo here, it's, it's just, just the circular thing.
And the, the old sign shows on your photograph right there, so...
It does. Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, there's the old sign, yeah, that, right there.
So if, if I may, so I've already issued the building permit and the sign's done already. They did replace that perpendicular side. It's actually more conforming than what's currently there, so it actually has a greater head height above, above grade. So it, so the new one is actually more conforming than what that shows there as well.
Really cool, have you seen it? It's, it's like, finally, you know, that finally we have something that looks nice and upscale, huh? What's that?
Pittsburgh mayor posted it on, online.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Mr. Walton, those goose neck lights, are they staying?
Well, we're getting new goose neck lights. Because for the, for the, if it gets approved, the longer sign will require more goose necks. So, yeah, I mean, this is, um, Moon Hill, nobody knows about, everybody knows the Ale House. And the brewery is a, a big part of it that is not very well known. And that's, that's part of our, you know, our phase, second phase in growing from just being a restaurant that everybody knows about and goes to. And people understand that we're a craft brewery and that we distribute our beer. And that's, that's a major part of our marketing plan. And this is, this is a big part of it, once we get some kind of a sign up in front of it that advertises that it's Moon Hill, we'll do some kind of a, a grand opening, a grand reopening, a celebration kind of thing. Trying to make a splash. Anyway, that was point number one, as you wanted.
That was what we replaced the previous one with. It was a horrible time to take a picture. But, but that's what we did.
Well, it's more of an, if you want to call it an attention giver than what it exists today.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, and that goes to the second point, I, I say that I do not see any detriment to the public good or a safety hazard from spilling a sign that is so far from the street and sidewalk. But your, your, your point is raised, is taken, that, you know, if it was too bright and that, that kind of, a price chopper kind of thing. Um, yeah, that, that could be a distraction and we would have to work to, um, find a way to... It may, if it's too bright, it may cheapen it as well. Sorry? If you, if it's too bright, it may cheapen it as well. Oh, yeah, exactly, I, it would like, it would be gaudy. And that's not, that's not something that we're, we're going for here, we're going for subtle and, you know, this, this could look too bright, you know, that, all those white letters and stuff like that could look too bright in this picture. We're not, we're not going for, for that kind of thing. We're just going for being noticed.
And, and a lot of times with the, with the, the back of the LED signs and the, and especially push-through like that, once we get the final design, how do we do it? We send it off to the LED manufacturer and they tell us what we need to put in there for, for wattage and spacing and stuff to get it so it has a proper...
Hours of operation of the sign?
It, uh, it goes on at dusk and goes off at midnight.
I know in the past, we've had a lot of sign applications over illuminated signs, usually with showstoppers. What's, what, uh, what is the, um, lu, what level of lumens are you using?
Yeah.
And very seldom you have, even in the sign professional.
Right. They have the right answer for that.
They don't have an answer, they have to get, say, we'll get back to you.
So, I mean, I could tell you what the, what the lumens of the LEDs we use are and stuff, but by the time you push it through a half inch of acrylic plastic with a white backer and a, and a kind of translucent, you know, face to it, it changes the whole thing. It's pretty hard to engineer it till it's done and built.
Probably diminishes the
Does.
color impact. You know, in terms of brightness as it goes through.
Right. But there's definitely, with the LEDs, the way they're built now, there's no reason we couldn't put a dimming feature in it. So if we did put it up and it was too bright, that you could just adjust the back a little bit in there and don't touch.
Yeah, you do have a wide building.
Same way?
You do have a wide building.
Yeah.
So, I concur with that. Do you have any questions right now, Randy? No? I'll go through my little repertoire. Are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
I will say a few words, Mr. Chairman. So illuminated signs, eleven, shall not be illuminated 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM unless they are associated with a business that is operational during those hours. So if you're operational, they're up to midnight, you know, that, that's an exception with the old ordinance. This is essentially a variance for two things. So the sign is taller than the required four feet, it also extends above the parapet wall. It's my opinion that the, the dimensions of the sign are in line and are proportionate to the building. So I, I would be in favor of something like this.
Okay. Are there any abutters who would like to speak regard, in favor of this application? Any abutters to speak in favor of? For the record, no abutters to speak in favor of the... Is there anyone like to speak in opposition to this application? Does anyone want to speak in opposition to this application? For the record, no opposition. And we only have two individuals here, so there's really no one else there, I'm not going to say yea or nay. Uh, Randy, Mel, do you have any additional?
No, I'm good.
You want to vote?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, do I hear any motion? To grant the variance for Moon Hill Brewing and the Gardner Real House according to specs as submitted?
Do we want a condition on the variability of the intensity, just in case?
Yes.
Who's going to make the determination on the intensity?
I think our sign specialist.
No, 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 you don't, you don't want me, you don't want me involved in that. Trust me.
It's very subjective, I mean, that's...
It really is.
Yes, it is.
It is, and, and I think our ordinance isn't, isn't clear, I think we would need to have something that speaks specifically to lumens and, and intensity and then we have to, you know, have devices to measure that.
But if you have, if you have it in there, you know, you at least have options. If you don't install it in the beginning, you don't have the option.
Yeah. And, and the other thing too is as the years go by and they start to dull a little bit, you can turn it up a little bit, give it a little power or do it to...
Well, I, I think, I think to Mel's point, um, having some sort of language in there, I think you can, you could determine if it's too bright, if you're sitting at the, at the lights and you're driving through downtown, you can determine it.
It's obnoxious.
Yeah, and, and it could be a traffic, a traffic hazard in, in that area, so having that, I think, is probably a, a good idea.
Should we, I mean, they, they said that they would would supply that, if we just included that as part of the presentation?
As a condition of?
Instead of a condition, just to have a discussion that the, you know, the applicant has indicated they will, um, install, you know, you know, a dimmer of sorts that can be adjusted if, if it's, you know...
If complaints are received regarding the brightness, et cetera?
If, if we want to do that, I would rather do a condition.
Or impact safety conditions, something like that. You okay with that?
Yes.
All right, second motion? Any further discussion?
No. None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Granted.
Okay. Thank you, all right.
Is it already up?
No.
I might see if it's too bright. I just texted, I just texted him to turn it on.
Hold it turned on.
Okay.
You only have one left.
This is like the, the longest zoning board meeting you've ever had in your life?
No.
I wonder what that was?
We have gone to a quarter of twelve.
Wow.
Wow. It was a... It, you know, I, this has been a good meeting. The quarter of twelve was very emotional. They really touched on family issues and people. And I had to threaten to call the police because they were getting out of control. So, this is, you know, this is a little longer than normal, but it's a pretty normal meeting.
If you started with the chickens, I was like, oh my. You're a while. The chickens coming here a while, well.
Yes, they do.
They do.
All right, good night.
Good night, Mel.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see who's left. I must have Eric Salmy from High Street.
No.
No.
No, no.
407 Chestnut?
Chestnut, 407 Chestnut.
You're right. I apologize for that.
No, not a problem.
We have so many cases and they all...
I'm glad we get to wrap up tonight.
Yeah, I feel a little tired, just passed it.
Okay, well, just let me get to this sheet I'm looking for. Camden and Stacy Brown.
Yes, this is Stacy Brown, I'm attorney Trevor Brown and the attorney for their LLC.
So I'm going to read the zoning determination because you're in for a I have variance. And it just says, and I'll read the whole paragraph. Please see the following determination in response to your form of intent. The above referenced address is located in Commercial Two zoning district of February two noon, February first, November eight eighty-eight. Chestnut, one eight, Chestnut Street from Logan to Main Street, adjacent to the railroad tracks, was converted from General Residential Three, G three, to Commercial Two zoning. Your form of intent... Your form of intent states that you are looking to add residential units, quantity not mentioned, to the existing structure located at four oh seven Chestnut Street and refers to a three-family dwelling on the adjacent lot of four oh three Chestnut Street, which was involved in a structure fire and subsequently demolished. Residential units, including single-family detached dwelling, two-family dwelling, three- or four-family dwelling and multi-family dwellings are not allowed in Commercial Two zoning district. As the second floor of four oh seven Chestnut Street was not previously recorded or used as a dwelling unit, it would not be considered a pre-existing non-conforming use. A new structure would not be permitted to be erected on the lot of four oh three Chestnut Street as the timeframe of two years to build, to rebuild on the existing footprint after demolition or catastrophe has left. Should you wish to add or convert the existing properties into apartment, into apartments, use variance must be applied for and approved through the zoning board of appeals. I have attached a copy of the application of this email for your reference. And, uh, the deadline to appear on May twenty-first, then there's April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The application must be submitted through my office with the zoning protocol issued, who will cause it to be filed with the city clerk's office. A supplier of the city, God, the zoning board ordinance can be reviewed in its entirety by using the following link. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Respectfully, Thomas Azupa, CBO, building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer. Okay, so what we'll go with, now, I'll just say this. Camden and Stacy Brown, the agent or attorney.
Yes.
You're on, sir.
So what we're looking for, for a plan to use, if we're trying to add three residential units into the existing structure, um, as, as that kind of mentioned, that the four oh three Chestnut prior, the adjacent property right next door, we also have ownership of. However, there used to be a three-family on that, um, and that burned down in twenty fifteen. We know we have the option within two years to build on that. However, my father, um, had kidney failure and passed away. It didn't really make sense at the time. He was kind of, and I was, I was still in college then. Um, so we weren't really able to, to take advantage of that. However, uh, when we bought the property, they, it came with a commercial space as well. That is now sitting at four oh seven Chestnut Street. That was Sergeant Memorials, um, I believe Sergeant Memorials started eighteen ninety-six and it was used as memorials, um, to make the actual gravestones themselves until two thousand and thirteen, we bought it. That building wasn't really set up for anything but to make like memorials. Uh, it has a showroom, it has a lot of open space, a lot of storage space. Uh, right now it's currently used as a car dealership, uh, but that was just because my uncle needed a space previously for a car dealership. He got it approved from the city. It's been used since. He sold the business. Uh, that, that isn't exactly a moneymaker for us. We just rent, rent it out. We, we lose money every single year on it. So, uh, we believe that we want to add residential units into the structure. We submitted professional plans that we had drawn up regarding that and, um, I believe that we, we can meet all the requirements as well. And like I said, I'm not going to read all the requirements, like word for word, it's, and it was like seven pages. Uh, I went a little overboard on it, but, um, I can speak to those as well.
Yeah, so this property, the four oh seven, that was Sergeant Memorials.
Correct.
It's now a used car dealership.
That is correct. Gardner five star LLC.
How many units are you putting in there? Three?
Three. The building itself is sixty-six hundred square feet. Um, we wouldn't be using all sixty-six hundred for the units, but there's ample space that, that the units could, could reside.
So how much of the building are you using?
It would be approximately, I would say three thousand square feet, maybe, maybe even less, uh, but at, at least three thousand square feet, I would say. Makes sense. The dimensions of the plans themselves are the exact dimensions of the units.
If it's converted against the three apartment, three apartments that you're looking for, what happens to the used car dealership?
The used car dealership will no longer exist.
It will no longer exist?
Yes, we, we, we do away with the car dealership. Correct.
So all those cars and everything that's there will be removed?
Correct.
Uh, to another location or?
Yes, if they, if they choose to, yes. They're on a year-to-year lease, so if, if, by the time that this will be done, obviously, we're still looking probably a couple of years in the future if, if we're re-approved to completion, um, but we would give them the ample opportunity to exit the premises. If we, and if we obviously had to evict them, we would, but we have a very good relationship with them and they would see that as a problem. Because initially we discussed actually selling the building and they said they, they wouldn't be opposed to leaving it, but just give them a heads up. I told them about this as well. They're on board if, if it is approved, that they, they would exit the premises.
All right, do you have any future plans as well, call for four oh three, the one that burned?
It's too, the, 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 the lot is too small. I have to get a variance for that as well. It doesn't really make sense anyway, um, based on the designs that we have for this. Um, the aggressive would fall onto that property. Um, it would be nowhere near the other property. I think, I think across is probably twenty-five, thirty feet, might be even more. Um, but we, it would just stay as it is now, just green space.
Okay, then the, the, the used car vehicles would not move to that location?
No, no, they're, they're, you, like, yeah, because I, I believe the application with the city approved twenty-one cars on that lot. It'd be lucky to get, I don't know, eight cars comfortably on that spot, so it would, it wouldn't make any sense.
Just for the record, I wanted to be clear and ask it.
No, I understand.
If you only ask it and you go later, they'll say you didn't ask.
No, we, we, we understand.
Okay.
Now, you have, uh, something here called the laundry facilities?
Yeah, so as, as I put in there, um, under Commercial Two, which is a permitted, we're going to have laundry facilities onsite for the tenants themselves, but we also think that it, it would, um, make sense to also open it up to the public.
So it's going to be a laundromat or some?
Correct, and that's just a permitted use under, um, Commercial Two, so it's allowed as long as I apply for a permit. Um, whether or not it's, it's approved, that's up to the building commissioner themselves, uh, but we believe, so the way it's set up is there is a, a door that is, was before, it showed had a big glass window that's not going to move, now it's just a door that walks straight into this, this big, long showroom that would be perfectly on the space for, uh, laundromats. I know in Gardner, there are a few existing laundromats, none that have ample parking and some of them have been shutting down just due to, um, condition-related issues. Uh, we think that this could be a really good facility, especially given the Chestnut Street itself having, you know, seventy-plus buildings that are all residential, a lot of them multi-families as well.
And you have three apartments. How many bedrooms in each one?
There would be two one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom.
So four parking spaces?
Yes, there would be four parking spaces, obviously, though we have a ten thousand square foot parking lot, so we, we should be able to meet those requirements as well.
Your laundry facilities strictly for the tenants of the har- the?
No.
That's what I, that's why this is.
I just said, public.
I said it would be, it'd be the tenants themselves, we think, given the opportunity, um, on Chestnut Street and given the residential nature, the nature of the streets going towards the school, it would make sense to also have open to the public. Uh, I think it's a lot more accessible than like Oskies or the Wash podium, whatever it's called, um, that is even on the corner of Monad and Knock and Parker. Uh, I think it would, it would just be, not only would it be all brand new, it'd be more state-of-the-art, um, but it also is a lot more accessible to people than driving across town to one that doesn't even have parking to begin with.
How would you handle all the parking down there? Would you line it out?
Yes, it would be separated. So we would, we'd have a spot strictly for the laundry, we'd have a spot strictly for the tenants. Everything would be labeled, everything would be, uh, whatever lighting that needs to be addressed as well, and it, it would fit with city code six seventy-five, article seven.
Well, if I remember correctly, the, the land is not paved, it's, some of it is paved, not all of it is paved.
Half it's paved, the other ones is, um, asphalt grounds. It would all be brand-new asphalt. It would be, even, even the existing asphalt now, then it would be brand-new.
Would it be actual asphalt or asphalt grime?
No, it'd be asphalt. It's asphalt grimes now because it, it just made sense at the time, um, to not pave that entire lot because all it was being used for was used cars. However, what we would do is be all brand-new asphalt all the way through.
Does the city still own those two lots?
We own those lots.
You own bottom from the town, from the city?
So there's, there's, there's two, there's one, the lot where the building sits on, there's four oh three, and then the city says they own a strip of land. Um, when I talked to the city, I talked, I talked to Flick and I talked to, I think it was Mark Hawk at the time. It was before even Nicholson took over. Um, no, no, I'm talking about it was Flick and Mark Hawk from there.
I'm just looking at the old, the old successor.
Yes, I understand. Um, they, they, there's a strip of land they said was used for emergency access, um, to, yeah, that went to the railroad tracks. When, when I looked at it before, I believe it was just an easement for such, um, they, they never have used it since we've owned it. Um, not that we're making a claim of adverse, uh, adverse possession or script of easement. We're just saying that, um, that strip of land, when we talked to the city before, we asked them to purchase it. They threw out a really high number for a strip, a five-foot strip that they used to use for emergency vehicles. They've never, ever accessed it since we've been there. We've always left it clear just in case they, they wanted to, but, um, that e- even if, even if we, we say that the city does own that, um, which, after doing a title search myself.
The two on the successor plan that shows two lots south, it's the city of Gardner, those are you, you guys purchased from the city or?
There, so that, that plot map, I don't know how old that one is. The only thing that the city supposedly still has any ownership to is a five-foot. If you look at that first one, there's a, it said, it said like fifteen four two, fifteen four eight, that little strip of land.
Yeah, fifteen, fifteen.
Correct. Um, there's no, there's not two plots there that the city has any ownership to. It's just that one strip of land. The only reason I included that older plot plan is because that's all the city had on file. I wanted to make sure I met the requirements of the application package, so that's why I included it.
Yeah, because these were, these were like the old successor maps before they were digitized.
Correct.
You know, these were, I don't know what version this is, but these were updated every year. I mean, all the, the changes in the deeds and stuff, they were already.
Yes, and like I said, that, that, they, they said they had that.
They were done every year.
They said they had that. They told me, um, but if you go on the GIS mapping and, and when we spoke to the city before, they said there's a five-foot strip of land and even the city wasn't entirely sure whether they own it or whether they have an easement, um, but the city never pushed back on it at all because they don't ever use access to it, like I said.
So again, my question, you guys have purchased these two properties?
Correct, at one point.
Never mind the strip. I understand, the strip is probably no man's land because it says heirs of.
Yes, CEO Stone.
Arsenault and Jackson or something.
Yeah, but yeah, those two, the two lots, all the way up until JR Glass's property, we have ownership to.
Okay.
Yes. We do, yeah. Yeah, we, we pay the taxes on it and everything. We, we have full ownership of those. Like you said, that strip of land is like no man's land. Um, when you chase the deed, even the deed's hard to read because how many times it's scanned into the system.
All right, there's three requirements for variance. You've heard some of them talk about it tonight.
Yes, absolutely.
Are you ready to address those?
Yes, and like I said, I'm not going to read it because like, I think combined it's like seven pages. Um, I'll just address them briefly, especially because it's almost ten o'clock and I know everyone probably wants to get to bed at one point or another. Um, so in, in terms of, in terms of the first variance requirement, um, I'll read the actual requirement itself. A little enforcement of the provisions of this code, what involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or opponent owing to the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally a zoning district in which it's located. So the first thing I did when I addressed that was just basically to see what that zoning district looks like itself. I know, um, based on the zoning termination, determination letter from, uh, Mr. Azupa, that from, in nineteen eighty-eight, they went Logan Road, adjacent to the train tracks, all the way down was Commercial Two. I know there's still seven properties from Logan Road down that are, that still have residential dwellings on them. Um, Chestnut Street itself, eighty-five point seven percent are residential in nature. Um, and like, uh, there, there used to be a building directly next door, it was four feet away. So when we get the fire report of four oh three Chestnut, they said it was four feet away that a three-family was. So I don't think that it does anything to do with the zoning district itself. I think it still resides in wherever that is, directly adjacent to residential, across the street residential. All we're trying to do is get this building to have some sort of use. Um, in terms of the, like, the land or structures, I think being directly adjacent to the, the train tracks, let's say this building were to be torn down for whatever reason and we, and we had a variance that was, uh, residential. The setbacks that we'd have to do as well, um, which wouldn't really make any sense. I think, given where the land is, adjacent to the train tracks and given the zoning district, that we meet that first requirement.
Yeah, because I think just my memory serves me, you definitely don't need front side back.
Yes, yes, correct. I, I, I meant in terms of, you know, directly adjacent either side because of the commercial district and then it's like right on the train tracks. We would have proper fencing and everything put up. Um, obviously, we would, we would deal with the city on that. We would defer to them to say what they think is best, um, because I don't know what would be best in terms of fencing, uh, but whatever the city says goes. I don't even know if that train still runs, but either way, we don't want people falling on the train tracks, so.
It does run, but not often that it runs.
I used to see it all the time when I was a kid, but I, I haven't recently, so who knows? Uh, and just be, uh, yeah, I think that's all I have for number one. Uh, other than the fact that the building itself is like I, I addressed initially, when Sergeant first, I remember we had a picture from William Sargent, we bought it from him, that the first, the first thing they ever had on that property was just the front office. Then they built four garages, they built a showroom, they built a barn, they built all these different things, not thinking, there would never need to be anything else other than for making gravestones. They still have the chain falls from the ceiling of the garages, which is helpful for replacing engines, but it doesn't do much for me, uh, in terms of trying, trying to make some sort of profit for, for my family on the property. So that's why, that's why I want to use variance as well. In terms of the second requirement, substantial detriment, so the second requirement is desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. I think if anything, this makes, this makes the city even safer. Um, right now, obviously, used car, car dealership is safe itself, but if, if, if we're renovating the entire building, this, this sixty-six hundred square foot, um, almost warehouse now, it's going to have better security, it's going to have cameras, it's going to have better lighting, it's going to have a new asphalt driveway. People aren't going to be, I know people like to cut through the property and go across the train tracks, but the fence, they wouldn't be able to do it. Um, I, I think it actually adds a safety requirement. And I also think it's important to, to note that Gardner itself has focused on kind of turning some of these big commercial properties into units. Downtown, downtown had added residential units. I just taught, I just heard the people with the police station, the old police station turning into units. Obviously, all of the furniture factories are now residential units. It seems to be popular in Gardner and obviously, we're in a housing crisis itself. So I, I think it not only adds access to, to more housing, but it, it's safer, just given the requirements that we're going to have to meet in order to get that property to conform. And then the, the third one, actually, hold on one second. Third one I labeled incorrectly, but, uh, uh, the variance itself though is desirable relief, uh, may be granted without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of this code. I quoted the code in here, um, just to say that the code was created in order to promote the general welfare of the city of Gardner. So the code itself is always looking to actually, and actually encourage applicants and inhabitants of the city to promote the general welfare of Gardner and try to get the best use out of their buildings. That doesn't mean anybody can get any use out of their buildings or, or apply for anything that they think best serve them, but also best serve the people. I, uh, given, like I said, given the way they're in a housing crisis, I'm an attorney, I, I do a lot of landlord-tenant law. We have fifty cases every Friday in Lomond, whether, whether we're defending landlords or tenants. People either don't have access to housing or getting thrown out of their housing one way or another. I see it every single day and I think even adding as little as three units can give three more families or three more people better access to housing in, like somebody, like the, the, the representative for Gardner Elhouse said, Gardner's on the up and up and I, I think that if, if the more people we can get, the more jobs we can create, um, all it's going to do is benefit the city itself. And I think this proposal should give significant weight because it, like I said, all of us would really, um, provide equal opportunity housing. And we will make sure, um, I'm, I'm, I'm already a landlord myself. We, we own some property in Gardner. Um, my father did the same thing. He sold all his property, we, my mother sold his properties after he passed. Uh, I don't blame, it was before the boom though, so, but, uh, so we, we sold those properties. Um, we're in the business. We under, we understand how it works. We own a lot out towards Athol. Um, Gardner's, Gardner's sometimes tough to get your foot in the door, but with, with, with this building itself, uh, it's, it's really tough to do anything other than try to find a use for it. So that's why we're going for residential units. When you're talking to the bank, it's tough because they see it as storage, they see it as automotive repair. That's not what I want the building to be seen as and it, it only, it only serves such a purpose as that. I think that's all I have on, on the list.
Thank you. Now, we just said there's six thousand square feet in that building?
Sixty-two hundred and, I believe it's sixty-two hundred and six square feet, correct.
How much would you be using for residential portion?
I would say approximately three thousand. I, I don't know what the exact numbers are. Those plans are drawn to scale. I didn't do the actual math. I didn't do the actual math.
So we'll just say it's plus or minus.
You said three apartments, one, two, one bedroom, one?
Uh, two, one, yeah, two one bedrooms, one two bedroom, correct.
And what would you do with remaining plus or minus three thousand square feet?
So the, the way that one of them would be laundry facilities, um, that would take up probably another thousand square feet. And yet the remaining two thousand square feet is mostly garages, and there's that front office space. The front office space would more than likely be used as, um, like for, for management, um, and then just basically whatever I really need it for. Um, we, we would probably, like I said, we own other properties in Gardner. It would be bad to have a pretty centralized space to, just for management of the building and manage other properties that we have. And then the rest of it's just garage space. Um, I have enough cars and projects that I, I could put in there, so.
What would you do, and I mean, the prior case talked about a dumpster or stuff for tenants to, you know, a trash receptacle or something other than the, the totes that we have now, is there any plan for that?
Yeah, so there's a, currently there's a dumpster on the property. Um, obviously, it wouldn't be that dumpster, it'd be probably something a little bit bigger. I know, uh, other properties, I have an Athol, one seven, one eight unit. Um, we use six yard dumpsters, it gets picked up bi-weekly. Uh, we use WM and it's, it's never been an issue. Basically, they come down, they pick it up, throw it over the top like you were referring to earlier, and, um, they take it. There's, I think, given that parking lot and how much space there is, there's space for parking for everyone and a dumpster. And I think there's still even more space left over.
Yeah, I don't know if you would get on that property, get any like Harvey would pull out some everything to drive on the property to go get it.
Harvey doesn't, uh, currently. They drive onto the property, get it.
Yeah, and I don't know in the city of Gardner, but that would be a question in my mind. If you parked a dumpster on the side or to the rear, would Harvey go in and get it?
They do currently.
That's a little change because all you see him is going up and down the streets and then wandering off the properties too often.
The Harvey currently has a dumpster on the property and they currently go onto the property to read. So I don't see, foresee that being an issue. And then, um, I would more than likely use WM just because I have a good relationship with them. Um, and they drive onto every property I have, one of them they have to go all the way up around a building, and they've never had a problem with me as well. As long as I tell them where it is and, and where, how they can access it, they've never given me an issue.
You would have no problem, I'm saying, with your footing, block top down, of lining and marking and numbering the parking spaces for your?
They absolutely would be.
For the tenants?
I, like I said, some, some properties I have that don't have that, tenants, like, they, they, they make it a free for all, so, um, I, I don't, I don't like that, um, but one of the buildings we had just, we had just recently purchased, and we have, we're waiting to repave it before we draw official lines, but right now we just have pretty much light sprayed lines. But these would be professional done, and they would meet the requirements under chapter sixty-five, article seven.
Let me ask me two members if you have any questions or comments.
Yep.
Okay, any representative of the city to speak regarding this application?
Of course I do, Mr. Chairman.
This is right up his alley.
Of course I do. Um, so the, the parcel that was in question that, uh, is, is owned by the city is, uh, our twenty-two dash eighteen dash five, that's that fifteen foot essential parcel. To my recollection, it was used for emergency services to the train tracks. Um, the city engineer and I had a conversation about that, he did make reference to that. Um, they do own the parcel, two, one parcel south of that, correct? Henrose Park and Glass, twenty-two eighteen four eight is, is owned by you guys as well.
Yes.
That's the parcel south. Um, when the initial zoning determination was issued, um, the initial application was only presented to me for, uh, residential units. Uh, you touched on the laundry map.
The facilities, yes, correct.
What level is that on? Where do you access that?
First level, street level, and it has a door from the street.
So that entire first floor is going to be laundry map?
So there's, there's an office space, um, I guess it's tough to, like, if I'm looking at the front of the building, there's where Garden Five Star has like a picture window, and that's an office space. And then there's a, a big, what used to be a showroom that had a glass window. It's since been framed out and it has a door direct, like, that would lead right into the laundry attic.
Okay, so the laundry map would be street level?
Correct.
Okay, so with that being said, um, mixed use is defined as a structure or structures featuring non-residential uses on the first floor of the building, which that would be. Um, or buildings which front the public way or other frequently traveled pedestrian travel routes, and one or more residential, residential or other permitted uses. So the or is key there, so it's not residential and other permitted uses. So non-residential use on the first floor, residential or other permitted use on the second floor. Um, that's the definition of mixed use. Mixed use in commercial two is permitted by right.
It is?
It is, yes, sir. So that kind of changes my zoning determination, but this would be a?
When we initially brought it to you, um, we were more focused on residential units than we thought about even turning that laundry facilities would be into an additional unit, uh, because we still make them the residential threshold. However, it makes more sense to give access to the tenants to have laundry facilities. Um, it's, it's just, it just makes the building easier for everybody.
Yeah, so I mean, but by the definition, by the table of uses, um, mixed use is permitted by right, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I think you'd still have to address, um, the parking requirements. Uh, again, I mean, I think that those parking requirements would really just go through, probably just through my office, I, I believe for, um, for, for the site, but yeah, um.
And we've used, um, I, I wrote it in here as well, we use Mackenzie, Mackenzie Engineering in the past. Um, they're out of Lemur, we use them for code reviews. Um, some, like, I, I know in Athol, that's what we have to do sometimes if we go to do something, they, they require a code review. I imagine it would require the exact same thing.
I've worked closely with.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're really good, um, and we always use them because, like you said, everyone around here has used them. They're about one of the only really good structural engineers in the city, uh, or in, in, around this area, so. Um, everything would go through them, it would go through him, we would make sure it's, it's all approved after that.
So I think, I think other than that, it all, it all falls to the building code. Um, but yeah, that's, if, if, if that's the intended use in that laundry map is, is going to be on,
Yes, street level.
On the first floor, street level, it's, it's a mixed use, uh, permitted by right in commercial two.
That's me. Didn't realize that.
All right.
And for notice, there is no one else in the audience who I can have. Well, I shouldn't say that, I mean, you may want to speak in favor or against, and?
I am absolutely in favor, but we have a building.
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm so sorry, my name is Stacy Brown, eighty-seven Narrows Road, Westminster. Um, absolutely favorite, we've owned this building for a long time, always wanted to do more with it, have it generate some income. Um, just so that we can fix it up, and do stuff with it, definitely like to.
Like I said, the hard thing with the banks too is banks just see it as warehouse space mostly. So any time you try to cash out or refi or, or take any equity out of it, they give us a hard time. Um, but if we're, if we're allowed to be able to change the use in terms of make saves, then?
Huge difference.
It would make a huge difference for everybody.
I'm all for it.
Oh, okay.
So if it's permitted by right, you may entertain a quest to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
If it is permitted by right?
Yeah, commercial two, yeah.
Then I think you're a little fair without prejudice is appropriate because if we're going to vote in the use variance for something that's not even required.
Correct.
Would you like to withdraw without prejudice, your application?
Yes, my name is Trevor Brown, I represent, uh, I'm an attorney who represents four oh seven Chestnut LLC, and we would like to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, all opposed, no opposition, except to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I apologize for the late.
No, it's okay, like I said, I just.
Good to work.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
There's not much left of the evening, that's right.
Yeah.
It matches it, Holocaust, yeah.
This wasn't bad.
No good.
I mean, it was long, but nothing.
So I have another, I have another one. Step for the checkers. This is going to turn out to be a problem.
I would go to the court.
Look, he's a nice guy, but.
May have to go to the archives.
He's not quite clear.
Yeah, no.
Thank you for staying, Mariella.
You have minutes to approve?
Oh, God, yes, we do. We've got something to offer, something we got.
I have a question, do you, are you guys leaving to the front door or did you park on back?
The what?
Are you leaving to the front door or did you park on back?
Front door.
Front door.
Well, we can go up the back anyway, that's what we do a lot.
Oh, yeah, exactly, I was going to lock it up.
I got the new business folder. We do have a letter here regarding notification to a better than the Wetlands Protection Act. It's one thirty Crystal Lake Drive. Is the property where the activity is planned. Proposed work is extension of North Central Pathway. Multi-use walking bike trail from Crystal Lake Drive through one thirty Crystal Lake Drive parcel to the abandoned railroad corridor to Point North National Bridge Substation three oh one Parker Street.
Make a motion, we place a.
All in favor?
Aye. All in favor, I said aye.
Okay, aye.
What is that, where are they extending it to?
It's the old, um, uh.
I know, they're gonna, they're actually gonna go right up there with that bike there. That's going to make some people unhappy.
Right there, if you want to read it. Okay, we have site visit minutes on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, Randy, myself, Dave Anteau, uh, Talcett Finding.
Make a motion, we approve as printed.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposition. Next one is the May twenty-two minutes. Um, myself, Edwin, Cornet, Anteau, in rhythm.
Make a motion, we approve as printed.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no opposition, approved.
What's the twenty-first? You had another minutes here that was connected to your on May twenty-eighth. Make a motion, we approve the minutes on May twenty-eighth, twenty-one.
Second.
Site visitor is approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposition, minutes approved. Looks wrong forward. It's a greenie. Okay, any further business before the board?
Nope. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed, meeting adjourned.